All right, welcome to the Monday, March thirteenth Oral City Council Meeting. Note to all council members and members of the presidency, except Councilmember Crosby tonight. We always start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to stand up and face the flag.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got actually two meetings tonight. We have a quick little HRA meeting, which will just take a minute or two. And so, and then we'll get to the regular meeting. So I will open the HRA meeting. Note that all council members and members, except Councilmember Crosby tonight, we have Adam Edwards, Laura Oakden, Senator Matic, and Ron Olson present. I will make a motion to approve the agenda in a minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes four to zero. We have no bills in communication. We do have election of officers as presented. I will make a motion to approve the selection of officers for the HRA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes four to zero. We have no reports of committees tonight. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that takes care of our HRA meeting. Okay, now we're to the regular meeting, and since we've already done a roll call and Pledge of Allegiance, we are to the approval of the agenda tonight. And somebody like to take a stab at that?
I can make a stab at that. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent items one through fourteen. I will remove number eleven, which is an encroachment agreement at forty seventy-five Highwood.
And I'd like to remove number twelve, please.
Number twelve, okay. So what we've got on the consent agenda tonight is number one, city council meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh. We have number two, city council work session minutes of February twenty-seventh. We have three claims and bills. We have four, dot fee schedule, twenty twenty-three ordinance two eighty-one. We have five, close fund three twenty-two, two hundred, two thousand and sixteen refunding bonds resolution. Six, disposable firearms. Seven, updated parks commission calendar. Number eight, twenty twenty-three appointment of seasonal employees, B one. Number nine, authorization to purchase parks equipment. Number ten, parks mowing services, so we're taking off eleven and twelve, and we'll do those. We'll do twelve first, and then we will put eleven in the community development report. We also have number thirteen, which is two thousand and twenty-three sewer rehabilitation rebid. And number fourteen, city administrator summary evaluation. Anybody have any questions on the items that we have in the consent agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, my apologies, I need to pull number one as well.
Okay, so we have one, eleven, and twelve that have been taken off. Any other questions on the agenda today? Okay, we have a motion with three to take off. Do it in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that'll bring us to, I guess we'll start with number one, city council meeting minutes of February twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Benson had a question?
Sure, just a very minor but important correction, and that would be on page twenty-two of twenty-two. City Attorney Matic, it would be the final sentence of those minutes. I believe what he meant to say is the gold standard certainly would be if you guys don't want to meet, et cetera, but the word wouldn't was in there, so it's a noteworthy.
Okay, what page is this again? You said twenty-two? And where's so on it?
Second paragraph, City Attorney Matic, it starts the second paragraph, page twenty-two.
Okay.
It's the final sentence there. I believe City Attorney Matic meant to say would, not wouldn't.
But the gold standard certainly wouldn't, if you change that to would.
You go from wood to wouldn't. I think the comment was to not have staff be in charge of canceling meetings.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that it was written as you intended it to be.
I didn't review the tape. My recollection is what I was gonna do was that it was about the council.
So it says, but the gold standard certainly wouldn't be if you guys don't want to meet on March thirteenth. That would come from the council. So is that a correct statement you made, you think?
So I said the gold standard would be for the council to cancel that meeting.
And then not put that on staff is what it says. However, you wanted to state it. I just believe that the word would is what you meant to say, not wouldn't, which is in the record. In other words, the gold standard certainly would be if you guys don't want to meet on March thirteenth, that would come from the council.
You're looking at the, there's a, it's, there's two statements. The first one says would, the second, the last says. So they conflicted themselves with each other.
Page twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay, so wooden should be wood. Put that correction in?
Okay.
We just have that motion, and we put the correction in?
Sure.
Is that the motion?
Sure, yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'll bring us to number twelve, work session schedule.
Yes. So I wanted to pull this to talk about it just a little bit, because this agenda item was added at the council meeting on February twenty-seventh, after the closed session. It was not on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. And actually, one council member was not present for that discussion, but Councilmember Crosby's also not here tonight. I was hoping to be able to have this, you know, just kind of talked about with all the council present. It would be helpful, I think, given that this is a change from the way that we've done work sessions in the past, to just have City Administrator Edwards just give a brief summary about the change that was discussed that night as related to the agendas of work sessions starting from here on out.
So, sure. So what happens with work sessions? Work sessions are set on the official calendar at the beginning of every year, and they're set for six P M or five P M on the evening of regular meetings, which start at six P M. There have been, there are instances where we do not have anything for an agenda for a work session in the past, as the minutes that we just talked about referred to. If we had nothing, then we would cancel those meetings. However, in our discussions over the last couple of weeks, we thought the best practice would be for the council to actually cancel those as opposed to it just being a staff-initiated process. So what you have before you is what I propose as a reoccurring council item, which will list out the future agenda items for work sessions. It shows tentative ones out in the distant future, and then, but we would address as a council the next upcoming meeting. In this, in this particular case, that meeting is the work session of March twenty-third, normally on the second work session of March. We do planning commissioner interviews if we have any. We do not have anybody available for planning commission interviews on the twenty-first, so therefore, the staff recommendation is that the council would cancel the work session for the twenty-first.
Are you recommending to do planning commissioner interviews a different date, and just roll into the next one?
Yeah, most likely it'll be in April. We do have one potential candidate, however, that individual was not available in March, so based on their capability, we'll look to slide it in an April meeting. I think it's gonna be for an alternate position, because the timing is not as critical. Normally, we're trying to do those planning commission interviews and appointments at the end of March, because the terms start and end in March, so.
It's nice to see kind of what's coming also.
And what you have out there in the, for the rest of the year are just those things that are regularly kind of reoccurring, that were things that we've already talked about in the past work session or council meeting that the council wanted some feedback on, so. Actually, if there are more, more items that you want to talk about, we can certainly add more items to the agenda.
When would that be done typically? When would we talk about adding an item?
I think if, that's one of the ideas of having this agenda item, is that if, if there is something that the council is interested in hearing about in one of these future items, that this will give you an opportunity to let staff know so they can schedule it.
Will this normally be on consent, or will it normally be an agenda item that is for discussion, or?
I'll normally put it on, I think I'll normally put it on consent if it's just to do things that are the norm, and then certainly if anybody has something they want to add, then it would just be easy enough to pull off and have a discussion. That's what I'm proposing anyway.
Okay, and part of that discussion we had last time was about the timing of the meeting, whether it needed to be maybe half an hour, an hour, and that would be something that the council would discuss at the time they're setting the next meeting?
Certainly. If, if we had an agenda item on there that we thought was only a fifteen-minute item, then we asked for mine, say, well, let's, let's start, let's adjust the schedule for the upcoming meeting to, you know, start at five thirty instead of five or something along those lines.
But these don't have to be noticed any differently, because that was part of the discussion as well. These are just gonna be, work sessions will just be on the, on the regular calendar, starting at five P M?
They are, they are noticed as a regularly scheduled council meeting. These are gonna be work sessions. So they're already noticed. So what this does is this generates a requirement for the clerk to go notice that the meeting is going to be canceled or somehow altered for the following meeting.
And that would be done after the council meeting? That the clerk would then notice it as being canceled or shortened or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, for instance, if, if you approve this as written, which was cancel, is canceling the work session for the twenty-first, then tomorrow the clerk will be posting that the meeting for the twenty-first work session has been canceled.
Okay, so what we'll see in the future is the work session schedule on the consent agenda. If we want to pull it and talk about adding something, we can, and then it'll be noticed accordingly?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, motion for this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the next work, work session draft agenda, with the planning commissioner interviews and the next meeting canceled.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that'll bring us to our community development report, and I guess we'll start with number eleven. Laura?
Yeah, so in front of you tonight, the property owner of forty seventy-five Highwood is requesting an encroachment agreement to address an existing building located in Wrightaway area. This building is existing today in a five secs of the Wrightaway property line, which is the full black line there on the screen in front of you. The owner has stated that their intent is to obtain some building permits for maintenance of the building, things like residing, re-roofing, things of that nature. Granting this encroachment agreement will allow the proper permits to be issued to do so. The current Wrightaway has utilities located, storm sewer, and sanitary infrastructure throughout, but was reviewed by staff and noted that that infrastructure is not in conflict with this existing structure. In the packet is the proposed encroachment agreement. I also have some aerial images I can show. If you have specific questions, the staff would recommend an approval, and that encroachment agreement is included in the packet.
And may I ask a question?
Is the property owner here?
Yeah.
Can you mind coming up?
Sure. Need to state your name and address for the record, too.
Rick Shyman, four zero seven five, I believe, right?
I pulled this off because I've learned by one of the neighbors that in this fire lane, that there's been a bunch of vegetation that's been planted down there to, that the field has prevented them from using it. There's a, I did go, I did go by the property and noticed that there was quite a few plantings in there, and, you know, so that's city property, so if somebody's approved that, then, you know, that should be at the permission of the city.
Okay.
So I guess, are those your plantings, or?
Some of them are. Some of them were pre-existing. Us, I mean, it was all improved and landscaped when we moved in.
Okay.
So there was a, there was a planting bed, a garden bed, and a statue that were right in the middle of, of the fire lane when we moved in. That was, I believe, taken out as part of the demolition. And then the prior neighbor next door has done some landscaping in there to handle erosion control. So the neighbor next door, the driveway is a hundred percent on the, on the Wrightaway up there, and they get significant drainage that comes down and washes everything out down there. So I think in the time we've been there, the five years we've been there, there's been multiple times that landscapers have been out there trying to deal with that erosion issue.
Okay. So, so thanks for sharing that. I think that, you know, with these accesses, they are for neighbors to use and take down, and, you know, it looks like there's a, you know, it looks more like screens than anything. And so what I was thinking when I read your application, I think with respect to what you're asking to do, that's reasonable, but with, with the, with the building. And I know the, the neighboring property, they have easement into that, right, for their driveway.
And they have an existing encroachment agreement up there.
Encroachment agreement, so I think we should wait till spring, have, have our city inspector go out there, assess what has all transpired in there, and come up with a plan to ensure, you know, right of access for people that do want to use it in the area, and find a plan to remove what wasn't supposed to be there, or agree on an encroachment agreement with the other, other plantings. So. I don't think we don't have timelines this application, right?
No.
Sixty-day requirement.
No, this is just at the request of the, of the property owner. There isn't a state statute timeline to act on this, to my knowledge.
Sorry.
No, this is a lot like any other property issue like a meeting or something like this, so it's not a sixty-day concern. If you need further clarification on what we want in there, you can certainly take a look at that.
So it sounds like there's really no issue with the encroachment agreement, getting, you know, I obviously want to really kind of get stuff fixed up and do that kind of stuff, so that's not a problem. Sounds like we just want to get in there when the spring comes and make sure that it's accessible for everybody, with the plantings not knowing exactly what's there, obviously, at this point. Do you have, do you have any problem waiting sixty days?
Uh, no, just want to get going on it.
Right, I figured that would be a priority issue.
We've deferred it for quite a while, so, you know, it was in rough shape when we moved in, and we're just been working with the city, trying to figure out the right path for it, so.
I like the mayor's optimism, like sixty days. So I don't know if we need to, I said a timeline for this, or just.
Go on table until the first meeting.
Because by then, you'll know what is there. I mean, if there's stuff that's growing up through the grass, that's not gonna be the issue. It's more if there's big stuff there, and you'll know that by the first.
Yeah, there are varieties, and some of them are dead, so. Okay, so I'll make a motion then to table this until the first meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes four to zero. Okay, well, sit in there.
Thanks.
Okay, that'll bring us to number fifteen, which is L A twenty-three dash one. Leasing Brothers Home and Remodeling, twenty-six seventeen Caskel Point Road variance. You again, Laura, or? Nope.
I'm getting this one down.
Okay, all right.
Natalie, is this your first?
I think it's my representation here. Good evening. I'm Natalie, and I'll be presenting this twenty-six seventeen Caskel Point Road. Pull up some of the plans. All right, so the applicant is proposing to construct a new deck on the west side of the home. The existing, the lot as it exists today is over on hardcover at approximately twenty-eight point four percent. This property is in a tier one of the stormwater overlay district, so they're capped at twenty-five percent. The proposal is to construct a new deck, two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, over, partially over an existing patio. The proposal also includes the removal of a portion of a patio and the removal of a walkway. Through this and their, the one hundred square foot hardcover credit, the site will go from twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight point four percent, to twenty-seven point nine percent hardcover. The proposed deck meets all other setbacks, including the seventy-five foot setback and the average slater setback. Because the applicant, because the property is still over the twenty-five percent of variance is required. Although the deck meets all required setbacks and the overall hardcover will be slightly reduced, staff is still recommending denial based on practical difficulties not being met. The request for the additional deck is more out of convenience and not necessary for the use of the property. The property currently has a lakeside patio, a patio next to the home, as well as a rooftop terrace to enjoy the lake. Staff also believes there are practical ways to bring the property into conformance to that twenty-five percent, and therefore, we are recommending denial. A public hearing was held on February twenty-first at the planning commission. Planning commission reviewed the application, and they found that there was practical difficulty in that the hardcover was existing when the property owner purchased the home. And then that the proposed deck is not out of character for the neighborhood, and they were also pleased that it was being produced in hardcover. So the planning commission voted five to zero to approve the application as submitted. The applicant has provided some more documentation and should be here tonight if there are any additional questions. Because there's a split recommendation, that's why it's coming to you for further discussion. And staff would like direction to either draft an approval resolution or a denial resolution.
Any questions for staff?
Not yet.
Applicant here? Let's take your name and address for the record. Andy Johnson, Leasing Brothers Homes Remodeling, thirty-two fifty Connor Road, ten north, Watertown, Minnesota. Thanks for your time tonight. The, the couple of things I just wanted to comment on that you can't see with our application. We did initially look at putting on the deck, and it was actually because of the lake setbacks. We actually had designed it to be actually eight feet bigger to the setback line, not realizing until we had updated the land survey that we had a hardcover issue. So our compromise initially with working with the city was to cut the eight feet back, which also included a staircase off the deck, and then to reduce the patio and stepping stones to reduce our hardcover. Right now, as staff mentioned, there is a patio that is on the lot out of the, of the home, and there is also a second floor deck. The new clients that have just purchased the property are unable to use those because of accessibility issues. And so that's one of the main issues that we have, the deck off the lakeside, is that we are doing a remodel project on the home right now, and creating a main floor master bedroom. So that's the, the main focus is to have the lake behind us and have a deck to enjoy, and compromising by removing the size of our deck, our deck stairs, along with some of the hardscapes to hopefully get this approved. So any questions at all for me that I can help answer?
Yeah, I've got two.
Yeah, sure.
In our packet was the staff's breakdown of hardcover, but we got the worksheet filled out also from the surveyor?
Yes.
That's current?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then my other question was relating to the patio. So it's kind of a peculiar shape right now, and what's, you're gonna remove the part that's ahead of the existing patio that's ahead of the deck?
Yeah, that little triangle right there, yep. This is like a stone patio.
Yeah, and then the rest of it is gonna be undisturbed?
Yeah.
Attention?
Yep, underneath the deck.
Okay. All right, that was my, my only question.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions for me? All right, thank you. If you're available, I'll be back.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, any comments?
Well, I guess, you know, my opinion on this is, you know, they, I'm, I'm fine with people, you know, what they're doing is reducing hardcover. I'm comfortable with them reconfiguring hardcover, particularly when it's outside of seventy-five foot and the, and the average slater setback. So I'm fine with this application, you know, and the reason I ask that question is because nobody don't want necessarily to see happen is to do that, and then after this permit is closed, and they make their patio bigger underneath that old deck. So let's put that on the record that, you know, it's continuing that, that little piece being removed in the patio under there. But otherwise, I think, I think people that have, assuming all this hardcover is lawful, and that people can re, reconfigure it, I think that's reasonable.
I like people to approve their property and, and reduce hardcover at the same time. We want to encourage people to approve their property, so. More amenities in their house than they, than they need to.
I agree.
Anybody for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve L A twenty-three dash one, Edward.
Or are we directing staff to?
Oh.
Or directing staff to approve a resolution? To draft, approve a resolution.
And we'll bring that to you next week.
Okay. I think that could be my next week, yes. Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes four to zero. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us to number sixteen. L A twenty-two dash seven, Stacy Cromenhough. Did I say that right? Forty eighty-five Watertown Road, after-the-fact variance.
I'll represent this one as well. This is an after-the-fact variance for forty eighty-five Watertown Road. The applicant is requesting this after-the-fact variance for a side yard setback for a deck, and more specifically, deck stairs. I'll just tell a brief history of the property. This property came before you in April of twenty twenty-one for variances, for the construction of a single-family home. As you can see, this is a very, very narrow lot and small for the R R one A zoning district. It actually has overlapping side yard setbacks, so there was no building envelope. And due to these practical difficulties, a variance, variances were granted back in twenty twenty-one. A building permit for the construction of the home was issued in August of twenty twenty-one, and during that process, staff reviewed a final asphalt survey and found that the deck and deck stairs didn't comply with the setback. They were built seventeen point three feet from the northern property line, where a nineteen-foot setback was approved. Staff reached out to the applicant with this information, asking them to modify or remove the deck stairs to comply with the setback. The applicant has chosen to move forward with an after-the-fact variance instead. The applicant is requesting an after-the-fact variance so that the deck and deck stairs can remain in place as they are now with the approval of a seventeen point three foot setback. While staff agrees that this is a substandard lot and with and without a building envelope, there are no new practical difficulties today that would lead to a smaller side yard setback, and that is why staff is recommending denial of this application. The construction error that resulted in the deck stairs being constructed beyond the setback does not technically constitute a practical difficulty. The planning commission heard this application at public hearing on February twenty-first, and they found that there were practical difficulties, and also believed the smaller setback would not negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. So they voted in favor of approving the after-the-fact variance with a vote of five to zero. Applicant is here tonight to answer any additional questions you might have. And staff, again, is looking for direction to draft a resolution, either approving this after-the-fact variance or denying it.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? I'd like to come up and talk about their application.
Stacy Cromenhough. I'm at ten twenty-five West Cove Lane in Minatrista.
All right, so tell us a little bit about.
It's a great story. So basically, when they did the original to-be-built survey, the surveyor misread the building plans and put in three-foot stairs instead of four-foot stairs, so that accounts for about twelve inches of the twenty-inch offset. Then the general contractor dug the footings eight inches off of that, so resulting in twenty inches total of a deviation. Unfortunately, the G C is not around to make the correction. Unfortunately, the G C is not around to make the correction. He has since lost his license and so basically I'm not the homeowner. Um, I'm just trying to help out the homeowner because I was the original, um, I was originally going to live there, so. Um, so I've been working with him, he came as well um last month. We do have the support of the neighbors. It is a very narrow lot, um, but we did build a really beautiful home for the homeowner. And really, we, you know, we talked about it with the planning commission, it was, you know, we talked about the harm versus it, you know, the pros of leaving it as is. Um, you know, it's twenty inches and I think if I would've come to the commission and asked for a seventeen point three foot setback originally instead of an eighteen foot, I believe it probably would've been approved because this is such an incredibly narrow lot and I think we did a really good job making a home that fit as best as it could in that footprint. But mostly, I think it's really about undue harm for this homeowner who had no fault in this and neighbors to have, you know, footings dug up and construction again for another summer. Um, and overall, we feel like everybody benefits within approval.
Any questions for the applicant? Alright, thanks. Any thoughts?
You know, I watched the uh original planning commission when this came through, we've done consent and council. I think, to me, uh, you know, the, I, I think that, I think we would've approved it despite the change. You know, the question to me is how do we handle this after the fact? We've got another one out next, um, after the fact and so we're a little bit of a precedent setting about people doing something and coming back. But in this particular case, I, I think they would've approved it, the city. Um, and I think it was an improvement, this property got pushed back farther from the road than it was before. Made it more conforming and, and I would've personally, I would've approved it uh if it was that way. So for that reason, I'm, I'm in support of just approving this. This was part in the uh asphalt survey, right? So the staff did a good job catching it uh on that end and um so that that part of the process worked.
Definitely agree with all your.
So good job.
I agree with you as well. Any thoughts?
Yeah.
Want to make a motion?
Okay. This is the direct staffer?
Yep, this is the direct staffer.
Correct.
To draft a resolution and support?
Uh, yeah, a motion to direct staff to uh to draft an after-the-fact variance for, or that?
Approval.
An approval res- uh resolution, pardon me, for LA twenty-two dash seventy.
Second.
Alright, on favor say aye.
Aye.
If that passes four to zero. Alright, that'll bring us to LA twenty-two oh sixty-eight. Ball is lawn care and snow removal on behalf of Park of Mesa. Austin Sun, twenty fifteen Casco Point Road, after-the-fact variances.
Thank you. Uh, in July, the lake slope, lake slope timber walls and other improvements on this property were destroyed by a fire. A building permit was issued uh to reconstruct the walls in kind. During the installation of the wall, staff observed that the construction expanded beyond the previous footprint and as a result, a stop work order was issued. Uh, because the work was halted prior to completion, in November, the owner requested and received permission from the council to install a final wall at the top of the slope, which their engineer determined to be necessary. Um, excuse me, their engineer provided documentation showing that the slope failure was imminent and needed as emergency correction. Um, the final wall has not been installed, rather, the applicant is now requesting approval to increase the height of the existing top wall to reach the correct grade rather than installing an additional wall. Um, the applicant is requesting after-the-fact setback variances to address the wall footprint expansions in the bluff and lake yard. Lake stairs aren't allowed improvement within the seventy-five foot setback um and can be constructed with an administrative building permit. However, the changes to the configuration of the retaining walls, if approved, will likely impact the applicant's ability to fully recapture the previous structural footprints and dimensions of the uh previous exist- existing deck and shed, which were also destroyed. In February, the planning commission held a public hearing. Following the public hearing and discussion, they voted four to one to um recommend approval of the variances, including the following conditions. Uh, prior to council review, the applicant shall provide an engineer's opinion regarding the necessity of the additional width of the installed walls. Um, this has been provided and was included in your packet. Um, so middle vegetated planting plan, which will screen the walls from the lake. Um, this plan is also then provided in your packet and uh following completion of the project and asphalt survey. Uh, comments from the public were received and were included in the packet. Two additional written comments were submitted today and they were um placed at your seeds. Replacement of the destroyed walls is essential to protect the bluff and steep nature of the slope on the subject property as well as the immediately adjacent neighboring properties who also have steep slope conditions. Staff finds that the variances to permit the expanded retaining wall structure within the bluff and seventy-five foot setback are necessary to protect the slope stability of the surrounding properties and once screened will preserve the existing character of the area. Staff recommends approval of the setback variances for the improvements as proposed. Staff further recommends vegetative screening of the walls be implemented to screen them from the lake as much as feasible. Um, tonight, the council should direct staff to draft a resolution reflecting your decision. Um, if it is for approval, we have the following conditions to recommend. Uh, the vegetated plant, plant be implemented um and the asphalt survey following the completion of the project be required. The contractor is present this evening, the homeowner wasn't able to attend and that was one of the letters that I provided to you. I can answer questions if you have any, I can put up the, the wall survey and um vegetation plan if you'd like, but um it's all that.
Mel, can you refresh us because we, we, we talked about this not too long ago?
Mm-hmm.
What did we approve at that meeting?
So?
And how does this differ?
That was an emergency, an extra emergency.
But we were, but there were some things that we were worried about that with that emergency. I, I remember that, but I remember us also saying, are, is this, are we agreeing to other things that were not intended? And are any of those things in here?
Nothing has been done. Um, at the time of the emergency slope repair, that was the only action the council took.
Got it.
Um, and it was not um in any way uh an approval of the expanded walls, which is why we're here tonight.
Okay.
So there were no other assurances made or required.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one. Um, Mel, so I'm just trying to get my head around this because I wasn't here in the beginning when this, when this started last year. So when the council um requested the amount of, or, or when the slope repair emergency was granted and um that enabled the contractor to continue working in that area in November to secure?
Correct, they did not, they just stabilized the slope. They did not do the final wall as they requested. They determined that um they would just protect the slope and then evaluated it and decided that a higher sixth wall that was already installed would be the better beneficial um support for the slope rather than an additional wall, seventh wall, more towards the home back into the yard.
Okay, but it was prior to that emergency slope repair, it was back in October, that it was noticed that the in-kind build was moving past pretty allowable.
So I have on the screen, um, oops, too many, a timeline.
Yeah.
Just kind of simplified timeline with um obviously the fire happened in July. We issued the permit for the in-kind replacement of the walls, which is administrative in September. Um, we issued that stop work order in October because of the uh expanded wall footprint that our inspector confirmed for us.
And the permit for the in-kind wall replacement was because the homeowner, the applicant had chosen not to utilize um boulders?
Correct, they, boulders would've expanded the footprint of the wall and they were trying to expedite the repair, so they did not want to go through the timeline for the variance publication and um approval for that.
And the reason for expediting the repair was because it was considered to be unsafe?
Certainly not, like it was.
The, yeah, right, there was a fire, but what, what remained, those burned timbers could not have lasted a season through the winter as such.
No, I didn't.
It needed to be repaired and a variance for boulders would not have been possible, it sounds like. That would've been a lengthy process?
It, it would've, there's a, you know, about a sixty day with our timeline for notification publication, so they felt that their best option to expedite the, to protect the slope would've been just to put it back the way it was and that was their intent.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, is the applicant here? I'd like to come up and. Anything significant, any address for the record?
Okay. I'm Joe Valdez.
Joe?
Joe Valdez, I'm the owner of Valdez Lawn Care. My address, sixty-four seventy-six Encore Trail South, Hasting, Minnesota, five five zero three three.
I am Tyler Warnke, um, I was running equipment on the show.
Tyler, is that?
Yep.
Warnke?
Warnke. Uh, twenty-one forty-seven Valley View Place, St. Paul, five five one one nine.
And I am Paul Shinowski with Criterion Shinowski Engineers, one sixty-one Denbar Way, Moda Beach, Minnesota, and a wall engineer of record.
So you guys pulled a permit for in-kind wall replacement?
Yes, sir, we did.
And I know what, the planning commission, you came in and you said you didn't look at the plans, you just went and just started digging.
Um, we looked at the plans, um.
You said you didn't even look at the plans, you just started going and digging.
Me?
Yep, that's what you said in the planning commission. Said you just went and started digging and you didn't even look at the plans. So I'm.
I, I, so I was the first on site and I had the plans with me. We were looking at the plans as we were starting the project.
Okay, so my question is, when you had the plans, you had a in-kind, why did you think you could bring essentially a bulldozer down there and scrape out the entire hillside?
So, so in order to get done, we had to remove all existing walls. In order to get down to the bottom, I had to dig a road.
No, you didn't. You didn't have to dig a road, that was your choice, you had other options. And that, that's my whole issue here, is you had other options. Okay, you didn't have to do it from the top and dig, dig an entire road down the hillside. You just chose to do that. Because I think in the planning commission, you said it would've taken way too much work to do it all by hand from down to the bottom, so you chose to build a road down the middle of the hillside and scoop it all out. So instead of a hill on the hillside, now you have a cliff.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we had to dig back all the tiebacks. All, all the existing wall came up. When we digged back in the tiebacks, there were big chunks of concrete holding those tiebacks. All that had to come up.
Yeah, no, I, I have a cliff too and, and the guys handed it all on my cliff when I had to redo mine. So they were able to do that, you just chose to go and dig it all when you had a specific plan for in-kind replacement. And so at some point, you dug it all out, your engineer came and designed an entirely different plan that you pulled, then you pulled a permit for. So it's like going and getting a permit for a three thousand square foot house and then building an eight thousand square foot house.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think that we have a little bit, um, we have the plan from day one from the engineer to replace the wall.
Do you have a permit for that plan, that engineer?
Yes, yes, we did.
You, you pulled a permit for an in-kind plan that expanded beyond the in-kind?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have the plan to replace the wall in the same, the structure as there, the wall before, we pulled out the permit before we started digging.
So how did they get, how did you go all the way to the edge of the bluff and go straight down?
And, and the reason we did that is, Mr. Mayor, is first one, I want to apologize for all this inconvenience and all the stuff we go through. I've been doing this for twenty years and we never had this issue. We don't know what we're getting behind those walls, so we start removing. Like, you said that we'd be able to do this by hand. This job is almost impossible to do it by hand. We have walls there, it's there before, Melanie, you can show the pictures. But the machine said, it's timber's under, the machine would've said. So it's, it's impossible for, be able to do.
Impossible?
Impossible to do it by hand. So when we got a plan to rebuild, we gotta stop the, the first day Melanie showed up on site and she basically told us, we have to protect the bluff and the neighbor at all the time. This site is very, very hard to work and I, my engineer can say the truth in this, it's a very hard site to work. We have a very narrow area, we have seventy feet drop with trees, it's been a hundred years old there. We have a site and the other side of the bluff of the neighbors, we have pictures of the concrete. Footing is completely being washed out for the dirt. The site that we protect is being basically with compost. When we remove the timbers, we have three walls already old being buried behind there. So when we start digging back, we not digging dirt, we digging old timber with concrete and.
I know, I had those in my bluff too and they did it just fine with, by hand and digging them out and, and drilling through them and anchoring them. They, they did that with mine just fine, they didn't have to go destroy the entire hillside. Because now, from my perspective, what you've done is you've gone right up to the property line and created a cliff that now needs complete support just to support the neighbor's hill. You need to support the neighbor's hill now because otherwise it's gonna fall down too.
Yeah, how we want to build a wall and my engineer and tractor, we cannot leave a burning wall on the back when we have to put a tieback sand to hold a new wall. How we be able to build?
I know, you never came and asked us, you just went and did it. I don't know, I, you know, you just, it, it, asking for forgiveness instead of permission because we would've never allowed that. I mean, my, my perspective is I think you need to go put the hill back and you need to get your engineer and you can figure out how you're gonna do it. You know, put the whole hill back, bring your grade all the way up at the house where it is, because it's probably five feet lower up there too. You built a window well bedroom after you had a stop work order.
I, I'm sorry, this is not, this is not our, this is not my contract with the window well. The grading in the house is, is sacked what it is before, we can't touch the grading of the yard.
Well, you had to build a road, you built right through there, so the grade, that's, you know, that last wall that we approved to bring up. You put up that you said it's so unstable, you have to have it, which obviously now it sounds like you were wrong. So I'm not sure what to believe at this point.
Uh, I wouldn't say I was, I was wrong. Uh, the ground froze and work wasn't able to continue. Uh, and so that emergency uh work order is gonna be very important to have, especially this spring when things do thaw.
Well, they said that they don't need to do it anymore.
Um, no, it's gonna need to be done.
Well, that seems not what I heard.
Or building a wall six or?
Yes, there was.
The additional wall you said you don't need and that's the, I mean, you, that, that's gonna need, that's the wall you're gonna need to bring the whole grade back to what it used to be
Yep.
before all this excavation happened.
Right, things are happening very quickly and upon further consideration, uh, that, that's additional wall that was proposed. Um, we spoke with the city and decided, looking at uh impervious calculations and things, that adding on to the existing uppermost wall uh would be a, a really good solution for that as well.
Um, my, my opinion is you created this problem, you need, you need to fix it. You need to bring it back to the way it was with what we were supposed to build. And I, and, and the cost, remember, is not an issue from our consideration. It may have been yours and the easiest thing to do was just to come and dig it all out versus hand doing it. And you did say, at the planning commission, because I may note it, but you said you didn't look at the plans, you just went and started digging. And that, that's confounding as well.
So I would, I would just also like to add that, you know, it always works on paper, right? Um, I drew these plans uh based on existing retaining wall measurements that were out there. And there was a lot of concealed conditions on this site. There's a lot of material buried on this site that needed to come out to stabilize this hillside. And looking at some of the photos of the existing conditions at the time of the fire, there was significant slope issues and erosion at this, at the adjacent property lines. That had nothing to do with uh this.
Did you call the city? Did you alert them you have a problem?
I, I did not with.
Did anybody? The answer is no, obviously. No, you just, just decided to just keep going and just build wherever you wanted to build. I mean, this, these bluffs are, you can't, that's, I've just never seen anything so so crazy as to dig out an entire bluff without asking anybody. You, I mean, you probably took out a hundred trucks of dirt, at least I can imagine. How many?
There is no, there is no way, most of the trucks held, we probably held four to five loads of dirt hope.
God, that is.
And then all the timbers.
There's no way that was four loads of dirt, my God, maybe you probably had fifty truckloads. But, I mean, you would have needed, I mean, there's all these other variances you would need for moving dirt and you just, just walked by all of them.
So, so most of the dirt that was dug out was put back in behind the wall. So behind the wall, we had to put drainage and we had to put rock in behind the wall. And most of the dirt was put back in intact down behind the wall. I, it, I, a road is such a, such a bad term, just a way to get down. It's not like I dug out the whole bluff to go down. I dug out wide enough from my excavator to go down the hill so I could dig out that first wall, so we could start building as we walk. And the dirt came back in, the dirt was going in behind the walls.
Have you ever done work in Lamanata before?
Yeah, yes.
Dug out bluffs like this before?
Um.
I mean, if you did work out here, you should have known that that's like a huge, oh no, like a huge issue.
What, like cleared out your bluff?
Really?
Oh my goodness, I'm sorry, I can't take it anymore.
After what you did to your bluff, what you're doing to these people is ridiculous. He got an emergency order to repair his bluff after he cleared it. He's giving you a harder time. The hypocrisy.
I'm, I'm apologize for all the inconvenience we created here. I think if we get enough of rolling here, we, so off the record, I'm not making extra money to do this, stand the wall or anything like that. I did it to protect the bluff and protect the job area. And I'm charging the customer, the charger, the customer not paying me an extra penny for that, it's all the way around it. I actually paid out of my pocket to be here to try this, get back to green. So I'm not there for profit in my company whatsoever. When we do a wall required by the engineer, we have to have a drainage behind those walls. Those drainage through the three feet with clean rock behind those walls. So when we build a wall and Melanie's here to show the pictures, it's three feet of drain rock behind each wall with drain tile to protect any drainage, any erosion control, they stay behind those walls. So the road that we pull out, seventy or eighty percent of the truck that you saw there, we have twelve loads out of there and I can show you guys the record of the tickets. Twelve loads of that and most of that is timbers and all stuff is underneath there. We not build this, and I'm sorry, I'm not here to go against anybody's will. When I say it's impossible to build that wall by hands, we not re-contract a wall, a system wall, we not making the wall stronger, the wall destroyed. But my engineer requirement, he cannot agree with me or not, he recommended to everything to be removed. You build a wall in front of the timbers, we have to have three feet of drain rock in front of this wall. So we can be on in the seventy-five foot set back from the lake, there's no way to build a wall, drainage, build a wall with no drainage behind. My wall will collapse. You can see what the excavator said, it has, the excavator, you see Melanie, the picture, it's set underneath and top of timbers, it's straight timbers under there. There's no dirt underneath there, that's correct. So I cannot build a wall eight feet tall when I don't have a good base in that. This is why I stand on it, I did it whatever I had to do at my hand. When you said the time we asked you for permission, this job started September, we worked straight outside of this Sunday to try to protect this bluff before the winter's coming. And look at where we have, seventy inches long, though, your bluff will be in the lake. It's harming the whole entire lake, so we did everything I can in my power to protect the bluff. And the neighbors in here can say, we have my guys digging by hand underneath those three roots. So we did everything I can to no damage any neighbor's property. So I think it's a little bit off when we say we can do it by hand, we did everything we can. And we have, the neighbor can say, here, see this, I was digging by hand, I'm not. But you cannot remove thirty, forty, fifty year old timber walls by hand, it's, it's impossible.
Uh, I guess, and we go impossible, because, you know, we entered in my bluff. And, and, I wish, hey, I'd love like it would have the opportunity at some point to illustrate, um, the, just the means and methods that are necessary to, um, to demolish, uh, excavate and, and build the timber wall. Uh, they had to move a lot of dirt. Um, and it's, it's gonna look like a lot is happening, but it, it, it needs to happen to build a, a structurally adequate wall.
Well, it would have been nice to have that conversation before you had to go do all that stuff or have any conversation. I had to go out there because the neighbors called me to go out there and take pictures of it to bring in the city's attention. Because nobody else was, nobody's looking after the, the residents who live next door or the only ones who are looking after the residents. I know you guys, you guys will be gone, you're not living there.
I, and I want, that suggests to, I talked to the neighbors and I tried to work with the neighbors along the whole project. And I tried to work with him as most as we can. And I'm in the middle, the homeowner, neighbor, and I'm got hired to do a job and I'm a stock. Owner want to do this, we have time limit that we don't, we cannot say, I see when we got a permission, you guys will meet in December, I think. Cancel, so December is not be able to bring it here to the, to the council, from the council to get any kind of approval.
We need December.
We, we act as the planning commission in December. We do all the public hearings in December.
If one meeting is not, we cannot be able to get it now because you guys don't have meetings. So it is a time consuming and we don't have, this job is started in October, perfect October, we have three weeks before winter hits. And this look outside, you mentioned the wall we would not build and build is not draining out of the whole block.
And it's not an excuse from my perspective, but, well, I think, uh, you know, sitting, sitting from this perspective, I think what you guys did is, is, you know, you, you know, we have to figure out what the, how to remedy this ultimately. I think I, you know, from the planning commission, it seems like the neighbors thought the quality work was done, I don't think that's the question. It's a, there's a question surrounding the methodology that you used, you know, I think a road is a good description, it's twelve feet wide, I think was, and, and it went down there. Could that have done, been done with large work from the lake without having to do that instead of coming from the top of the bluff? No? Um, uh, could it have been done? Yes, it would have been practical to do that, uh, no. Not with the, not with the material that needed to come out temporarily and then go back in for backfilling.
Final, but practical is an issue of, you have a bluff and now you don't have a bluff, okay? You have a, you have a cliff now.
Yeah, so I think, I think that road down the middle was, you know, when I saw it was, was pretty alarming. I, I, I haven't seen that methodology before and it seems like keeping as much of the bluff virgin is important. And by doing that, you know, down the middle, you, you, you created that void and maybe some of it was existing with the old plan and everything. Um, and so, but I, I think what we don't want to have happen is, is to, how do, how do we handle this situation to discourage other contractors from just plowing down the hill and telling us, well, that's how it should be, you know, that's what we found. On the other hand, I appreciate that first work oftentimes, you know, finds, you know, you find things when you start digging. And what I didn't like about your report was your note that the reason that the, the emergency seventh level wasn't done because of frost and snow. On another project, on a property owner in another city, I dug a basement around the same time and they didn't even have to put frost blankets down. So it wasn't a frost issue and if you can move all that dirt, you can certainly move some snow to get there if that emergency was required. So then I read that and I thought, well, that's disingenuous to me. And so then it calls into question the rest of it. And all we want is to get the straight story, we wanna make sure that other people don't do the same thing, make roads without the city approval or understanding and the right engineering ahead of time. So, um, so I share the neighbor's frustration that, man, we can't just have this going on, can be wild west on these bluffs. And I think that's what this was. So I, I don't really know the path forward, but it, you know, you created a problem. I was, I was surprised also when I, when I was notified of the extent of the, the construction that had occurred. Um, but it did vary from my design, uh, and so that's something that, that I'm still addressing with the contractor.
Do you, you guys find it?
Right. So, I guess that's just my, that's my question to you then.
I, I, I think my concern with this is, is the neighbors, right? They didn't sign up for this massive, I mean, it, it, if the audience hasn't seen the pictures before and after, drastically different. Um, you know, they're, we're pretty protective of the in-like and kind, so just to see the change, there's a lot of earth that moved. And so I'm concerned for the homeowner, which is not you guys, right? And I'm also concerned for the neighbors, like what other, other problems that we're not, what else is gonna come out of this, right? Because so much was changed and that wasn't in the plans. Like we have several emails from residents just showing us the before and after and it doesn't, I, I had to look at it several times and actually go out there. It doesn't even look like the same property. I mean, the mass change, I, I feel awful for the homeowner. I just don't know how you got here without just picking up the phone is kind of where I'm kind of struggling with it. I don't know the board either because it's so, I mean, I, I, I want you to put it back and make sure they're taking, the residents are taken care of. And I know that's gotta be a mammoth expense, but.
The walls is built in the same, almost in the same area the walls are, so we not take any of the block. Whatever the red color is, is where the old wall used to be. So we not cut the block back.
It's a little hard to follow though, even your engineers saying you guys didn't.
You cut, you cut way into the block, you cut almost in the property line. I'm not sure if you're over the property line or not, unless there's an updated, uh, survey with the final product. Since he obviously said you already went off, you went a different scope in terms of what he designed to begin with.
Samir, and to address that part is, when I, we met with the city, the city said we have to protect both side of the block. We not destroy this side of the block where the walls be extended. We have to dig eight feet back for each, wherever the length of the height of the wall, we have to dig back. So, so we have a wall on this side, we have to dig back four feet. So you fifty feet back up, you have to dig back and pull the dirt back in there. It's no way to build and put a leg.
I got a lot of have tos, a lot of have tos and impossibles in this conversation from you, that's for sure.
I have a couple of questions, if you're ready. Is it possible, if this were rebuilt, that the bluff is gonna look as it did before? Is there a way of restoring this block?
The, the pictures that we look at it, you have a bull hall, you have a staircase, you have a, a massive brush there, this not, it's got all burned out by the fire. So this is what I see, it looked massive, the way we doing right now because you don't have any vegetation next to it. This is what, you don't have a bull hall, you don't have a staircase, all this will contract the wall. Because you look at the, the original design, every red line is the old sixteen wall. And you look at the brown hall, the burnt wall, where nothing in there is, is look back again. Whatever we dig, we put it back. The engineer from the city stopped by there and he made the comment, he said, it has to be done to protect the block. This is a comment he made, me, he said, I stopped working you because you stand outside the wall to get permission, but we do not did nothing wrong to protect both of this block. This is what the engineer from the city come up.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, this, my English is not my first language, so this is why there's a lot of words, it's probably not the right word to say. So this is not my first language. So, first you look at the design and follow you, we tried to build a wall, it's most of us have to follow the engineer requirement and stay where it's, we measured, the engineer from the city measured every single wall, we write in the line, but the, but you guys approved. We not go back, not even two inches. High whites, we right there, one wall is two inches higher. So everything is applied for you guys' permission. While we not did in the plan, it's extended to protect both neighbors block. And it's being required by me and the city, first.
And, and the reason that you had to dig back so far is to accommodate those, the timbers that run perpendicular to the wall, the dead nun timbers, is that what you said?
And when we start digging, we don't know what is on the, on the back of the wall. You have to put so many dammens. And when we build this wall, it's completely structured from the bottom all the way to the top. So we basically tie every single wall, it's like a, like a structure all the way from the top, so the wall be there forever. We mentioned here in boulders, I want to build a boulder in the beginning. This is my first plan, I have designed with boulders. When we present it to the city, we look at sixty to ninety days before we get approved. With, this is already on October or September, sixty to ninety days is gonna get me January, it's impossible for us to build a wall with boulder. You're asking me, I want to do boulders right away, I don't want to do timbers. And, and, and a piece of paper where it's gonna look fine, like, I'm not looking at plans with details and I, I amend that. I got to there, I got hand in there. We tried to follow the plan, the first wall, the second wall, so most exactly what is the, the plan goal. When we get to the two walls, eight feet wall, how we can hold eight feet both sides when we have to dig for the damment?
Are you done with all the excavation at this point, is you still grading to finish?
Yeah, the wall is done, actually for the emergency, we, when we got stopped working, this happened on Friday, at three o'clock. We completely stopped work, I go back there, the little slope you see there, it's a burn that we put it. So that way no water run into the wall of the lake, we put erosion cover to protect that. So it's probably a four above, the, where the original grading is. So this is when I talk to my engineer and I talk to Joshua about it is, we don't need to have a second, a seven wall because it's gonna get more into the, the homeowner's property. When we can go six timbers higher and it's done and.
Mike doesn't get the grade level back to where it should be and if you did tie rods, you wouldn't need to go back, you wouldn't need to have eight feet behind the wall. You could have probably eighteen inches. So it was your desired construction method that caused you all this problem with what you're doing.
I had another question, unless you wanna.
No, please.
address that. I believe I read, or maybe I'm incorrect in that, is it true that, that trees are unable to be planted in or around this new, um, retaining wall?
Trees, no, shrubs, we have a whole design that's gonna be completely covered all the walls. All the plants there will cover the walls, you can see, all the grass, all the plants there will be able to.
What is the height of the shrubs involved there?
Uh, you have some grasses that's gonna be three to four foot high and you have some arborvitae that can go up to seven to eight feet high.
Oh, arborvitae, not tree, but those are seven to eight feet?
Yep. So you have some ghibli that's basically just gonna climb over the wall, so that way you don't want to have any plants, the root system can have with the drainage of the wall.
So arborvitae does not have invasive roots, right?
No, because the, other than we have the shrub, it's ornamental shrub, so that is very rucous and very friendly with the wall system.
So one more question, if I may, um, what might be the effect if, if the work were to be taken out or, you know, redone? What effect might that have on any stabilizing of the adjacent properties?
We can put the wall back, we can put the dirt back in there. How are you gonna hold the, the block? That would be the question I ask it from day one to my engineer and anybody while here to the neighbors. You look at the neighbors and they're both sides, all the bluff is washing down. You have a root system, showing that is completed, root system of the tree completed there, because it's nothing on the block. The neighbors on the east, I think it is the east, the, completely, the footing is completely out, the routine wall that he had there is completely in there. Nothing's on the block. So to protect the block is you have to have vegetation. And it's really hard to grow vegetation when you have forty feet drop. Like I say, I apologize for any distance here, I tried to follow what had been requested from me when Melanie struggled and said, you gotta protect those blocks at no time and you have to make sure it's done.
Right, but at this point, there's no putting the bluff back, is that correct? It would be tearing out what's there and putting in boulders or something else?
It's gonna be, I don't know, to, to put it, the wall, the bluff and to the right of me, the bluff is complete. It's walls on the back of those shrubs. You not see it from the picture? So it's an old wall that's there before. So it's, the wall is, the only outside, the old wall is, the little ones is protecting the block.
I think she, we, we haven't, I'll just say we haven't talked about that, or I haven't personally, I don't know if he has. She's wondering if, if, uh, like, if we were to tear it up, what would be the next step? Like, would it be boulders, would it go through that, would we be able to replace what they say we destroyed of the walls?
Is more harm than the good, is the word?
Well, that's the after fact problem that we've got because of...
So I, I just wanted to clarify one statement that I made that I hadn't. With the contractor going off of what my design showed, uh, it's, uh, most of it is an improvement over my design and something that I was asked to comment on about why it was necessary to go further out. There was extreme erosion happening along each side of the property. And these additional wall sections, uh, helped to, uh, remedy some of that uh, in order to protect the adjacent properties.
Did you bring in new soil for that, or is that all existing?
This was existing.
All existing, yeah.
And so we have five loaded drain rock behind this wall. So where the drain tire is right now, this is always set in drain tire from the neighbor's property there. The whole bluff is keep washing down. The root system on top is completely in there. It's a dead tree we not even remove. We work around the, the root system to protect the bluff.
What's the width of the terrace? It looks like a terrace, I don't know what else to call it, of that area there with the soil?
It's three, uh, it's a little, uh, quite small.
It's generally...
Three feet, so three feet one, the, the difference where the bohr houses are gonna go. And this is why I say it looks so massive because you don't have a staircase, you don't have a bohr houses. Used to be there in the picture before, this is what I feel like. You not see those walls anymore because you have all this structure there. Now it's open wall with nothing and problem.
Uh, you know that picture of where the, showing the fence going all the way across to, to show on, the old picture, showing your head? Well, you had, you had it up there some minute ago.
Oh, okay, that's what you want to see. That was pre-existing?
Yeah, they're pre-existing. So no, when we did that, yeah, that one, so you can see up there, the fence goes all the way across, ties in to the other fences. And it's the same height, um, where the fences are on each side of the property. And that, that last wall that you have to put up, to me, that wall would go up there to be able to bring the all the grade all the way back to where it's supposed to be. So you could potentially go up there and say you could put the fence exactly across. Because right now, that's gotta be five or six or seven feet lower.
So, so I just wanna say that to the left of that, I don't know, kinda tree that is, right in there. That, to the left of that, to the right of the stairs in between there, that jumps out. So that, it, it's not straight across, it doesn't come straight across there. That came across and kinda jumped out.
And we just see generally, it's about the same, the fences are the same height. And when you look left and you look at the right, the fences are generally, and right now, that slope is gonna be five, six, seven feet dug out.
Uh, like I said, we put a hill, intentionally, we put a little burns on the way the water from the backyard, so basically we did it. Protect the neighbors in the east and the west, so the way the water is staying here in the yard. And we closed it up, the hill there is not a grade, it's not a final grade. This is, this dirt will be left there to protect the water, to not go into my wall. Because it's not complete, we can only open dirt and the water running to the lake.
Well, I mean, that, well, part of it is, either way, it's gotta be back to the original grade.
So the reason that we asking for the seven wall was because it's a four and a half lower is four and a half? Or extension of, the extension of it? Yeah, and the six wall extension will give you the four and a half high, so that way you and...
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna do it, that's not gonna get it to the original grade. There, that's like five or six feet at least, at least.
You can pull the, in picture with the roach cover it, please. It's right there. This is not even two feet high. And like I said, that dirt is not in the grade.
Well, the roof's in the footing, because I've been out there and I've stood there too, so, and it's a lot lower. So that, to me, it would have to come up to the exact original grade up top, so...
Is that...
That's just one problem.
Oh, is that something that could be done, or is that...
Well, that's the, the other emergency wall that they wanted to put in, that they asked for. By putting in that wall, that would be high enough then to bring all the original grade filled in back towards the house.
And that's their intent with raising the sixth wall instead of the seventh wall?
Okay, I don't, I, I don't think that's gonna, I, I, I just don't believe that, that that's gonna work.
We have the, the new survey available.
This one, this one?
Right, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that in future applications for, you know, retaining walls or things like this, that we require them to provide us with our, with their method of construction, rather than just the plan for construction. At least, that would provide a more realistic expectation for, for, for the applicant and the, the neighbors as well as city from what we're going to see starting to finish, how the project will progress.
That makes sense, because it also, until somebody tells me they're gonna need to dig eight feet back, I'd say, well, you need to find a method.
So, Mr. Mayor, you had a question or a comment about, um, some kind of anchor that said that we went back eighteen inches? Um, correct me if I was incorrect, wrong about that? Do you wanna, do you wanna say more about that?
Yeah, they're big, uh, anchors, they're about thirty feet long that go in and then they pull them back out and they anchor. And they put about five thousand PSI in, uh, and holds the whole wall, all the rock that's in place and nothing's gonna move. And then my bluff, which was probably, oh, I don't know, maybe a twenty percent of that, I think they put thirty of them in.
Okay, and I had considered that method, but we were gonna excavate and to remove the existing timbers anyway. And so to get that...
Well, that was the desire of yours, but that was never intended to, to do like and kind, is to go back four feet, five and a six feet, seven feet. That's the problem that we've got now.
So we, we only, they only removed the existing timbers that, who knows if anybody ever approved those existing walls before? But they had, you know, six, seven, eight foot long, uh, dead men and tie backs that, that needed to be removed. And so that, because we're excavating to remove all that material...
And we're gonna do the same thing with my bluff, we're gonna remove all those and, and to drill through two or three other walls that were in place and... So I mean, it's all, I mean, methods are very different, obviously. You know, there's, I said hindsight's twenty twenty, but no one ever came to us, you know? No one ever came to us and they just did it. So that's, that's what I'm, that's what we're struggling with, is how we solve this problem. And we don't, and this problem doesn't happen again. Because this is, the bluff is gone. It's not just cutting some bushes back, the bluff is gone. Any more questions you really have with me? I know we've got some neighbors here that would like to come up and speak, so if we got some more questions, if you're, if you can stay around, that'd be great. Any of the neighbors here that could come up and comment on this? If not?
Some discussion with the only one coming?
My name is Carol Price. I live at twenty thirteen Casco Point Road and I am the property owner on the west side of this property. Um, thank you for hearing me out, I do have some grave concerns. Uh, the biggest one is that adding one point seven feet to the existing sixth wall, the top of that wall that exists now, it's not sufficient to prevent soil erosion from my property on the west side due to the differences in the elevation levels as the retaining walls are currently built. Um, and you saw by the picture earlier, the, the fence at the top. That, that level is basically the same along the properties. And this wall actually curves in. Uh, part of that was, was building these walls further back. Um, so I'm gonna show my findings, um, I've been going through a lot of this data, uh, even back from the original drawings. So there is a letter from, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce, Criterion Shenovsky Engineers dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three regarding the sixth wall versus the seventh wall. And it does not mention any change in property gradients to the adjacent properties. The letter states the design option to add height to the existing sixth wall was done on December ninth, twenty twenty-two, but there are no details in this information packet to support the design analysis. Also, this letter states that adding height to the existing sixth wall is, I quote, "a good option to reduce the steepness of the slope." However, this conclusion to me seems rather vague and it does not indicate the total gradient and how to mitigate the effects of a steep slope. The letter also states that adding height to the sixth wall versus building the seventh wall could, I quote, "could result in less soil disturbance and excavation." However, the bluff has already been disturbed and excavated with a bat hole, basically digging out the entire bluff throughout this retaining wall rebuild project. It is my concern that the Criterion Shenovsky engineer does not provide any details of how to mitigate the slope from the neighboring properties with respect to adding one point seven feet of height to the sixth wall and how that is comparable to building the seventh wall that was in the original plans. But all that is explained if you review the original plans of retaining wall by this engineer dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. In the design limitation section, there is a statement, quote, "Site layout and gradient design are not included in wall design services." Those services are the responsibility of the site civil engineer, end quote. So that begs the question, who is the civil engineer on this project that can assure that the grade is done properly to mitigate the bluff gradient to adjacent properties? Based on the property surveys, the elevation level of my adjacent property near the very top of the bluff is at nine hundred and sixty-three feet. The survey in Council Exhibit A depicts the current top of the sixth wall at nine hundred and fifty-seven feet foot elevation, a difference of six feet. By adding one point seven feet to the sixth wall, the resulting elevation gradient would be four point three feet. So on some of the photos, I, I think they, they are cogent to this discussion. There is a photo on page twenty-six of this information, information package, packet that does show the existing slope of the twenty-eight fifteen property to my property, twenty-eight thirteen, that currently exists. The plans provided in this information packet, Council Exhibit E, show plants and flowers that will be planted in this area. This depiction also shows a wall on both the west and east side of the property. I am not certain if these walls are the existing wood timber walls that run along the side property lines or some other wall that will be built to replace the wooden timbers. However, my concern is, will this depiction in Exhibit E be sufficient to mitigate the four point three foot slope differential that currently would exist? As a comparison reference, there are photos included, included in a letter from Shenovsky Criterion Engineers dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regarding the timber retaining wall upper tier. And that closely resembles the current condition of the bluff with the exception of the snow on the ground. The photo had an outline superimposed for the placement of the seventh timber wall. The outline of the seventh wall did extend along the adjacent property lines to hold back the dirt. The engineer stated in this letter that the final seventh wall height will increase to about four feet tall near each end where the existing slope increases. In a follow-up letter dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the engineer states that, quote, "The slopes at the top of the timber retaining walls constructed to date are much steeper than originally designed. Thus again, my concerns of the steep slopes." The city council has a very difficult task to decide on the next course of action or reaction for this after the fact variance request. The request to increase the height of the top sixth wall to reach the correct grade height, rather than installing an additional wall, has my concerns. As the property owner on the west side, the elevation gradient to the top of the bluff seems quite steep with regard to adding only one point seven feet to the top of the sixth retaining wall. Should the city council authorize construction of the added height to the sixth wall, I will request that Item B of the council action request stating that city council approval would require, quote, "Submit of an ASVIT survey following completion of the walls and restoration of the grades." This could be ambiguous considering the top of the bluff and the side elevation gradient to adjacent properties have been altered from the original grades, that is, before the fire occurred on the bluff and burned the original retaining walls. I would ask, I would also ask the city council to require that containment measures must be implemented to compensate for the change in elevation from the applicant's property to the adjacent east and west properties such that erosion is mitigated and controlled. Since the licensed engineer who designed the retaining walls is not responsible for the site layout and gradient services, I would request that the site civil engineer provide written assurances that the work was completed based on known industry specifications and building codes for mitigating soil erosion and collapse of the bluff. So my final comments, this was a massive, massive project. Um, there were many, many dump truck loads of dirt. And as one of the neighbor kids was enthralled by all those dump truck, dump trucks, he was counting, he's, he's learning how to count. And he said, "Mom, there's already been six trucks there today." So this little boy wasn't even counting. Um, I don't question the bluff work itself. I think Joe Valdez and his men did a good job building the wall. It was the method of just tearing away the whole bluff that had everyone concerned and has everyone concerned now. And my concern is, that top wall doesn't meet the original top of the bluff. It's, it's still angled, it's still sloped in. I'm not saying it can't be fixed the way it is now, but I would like to see more work done because adding one point seven feet to the sixth wall, it, it doesn't pass the muster with me. Um, there are the indications that plantings are gonna be made. I will say that the, uh, wall was built with a combination of dirt and stone behind those walls, a good drainage. That is as it should be. Um, I'm concerned at how will those plantings take effect in that type of soils, stone? Certainly you could add something to, excuse me, to it to make it work. Um, I think everybody tries to do a good job. Uh, the method of this one was beyond what we've seen for the late order. But that doesn't mean we can't go forward and just make it, uh, a bluff and retaining walls such that the neighbors on the east side don't have to worry about that bluff falling apart. And I am concerned because I am on the high side, so if that meeting of the adjacent property, my property is just gonna start sliding down into the applicant's property, not that they want that either. But I just, I'm just worried. So you have my condolences on how you wanna make the city, it's, it's tough. I agree, it's, you're very, very, very tough. Thank you.
Hey, I just say, you know, thank you. I, I mean, this is a lot for a neighbor, you're a particularly indicative one in a manner of, you know. I'm sorry, you've had to learn this much about it?
I am sorry.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, part of this, and thank, thanks for your comments. We'll definitely wanna integrate some of your recommendations there to our opinion. But, you know, the other part of this, one, one side is how do we deal with this? How do we deal with contractors that go outside the scope? But the other thing is how as a city do we do this better next time to prevent it for neighbors like you, right? But if you, all you do is live there. So thank you for...
Thank you very much for your comments too. Thank you very much for your comments too.
I am Charles Price. I am Carol's husband, and I live 2813 Castro Point Road. The property is you're living at, all these drawings we're looking at, it's the higher property which is on the left and the west side. Melanie, I have a couple of points to clarify. Melanie, you made a great point that next time an application comes in, some questions you needed to ask, how is this going to be done? And I think that might have been lacking on this one, because I know everybody from the city who saw it was very shocked. Can you, Melanie, can you pull up the picture with the line pulled across that shows the original fence line?
I got my painting that that was in your comments, correct, Charles?
Yes.
That was the one that you provided? Okay.
And just to add another data point on the dump trucks. When we talk dump trucks, these are the kind they use on the interstate highways, you know, the tandem duallys that hold, I don't know how many yards, but they're massive. And the worst day, I think it was, you know, we're there pretty much every day, we saw at least seven and maybe eight of these giant dump trucks, the dirt getting hauled off. It looked to me like they were bringing in gravel and backfill and others, so the dirt went out and hopefully proper backfill came in, maybe the contractors might be able to clarify that. Oh, you got it up, okay. This is showing the top of the bluff work that originally was. If you follow that white line across there, that actually goes from the property on the west to the property on the east, pulled right where that fence used to be. So that really shows where the top of the bluff was, from the top of the original bluff where that line is, and that goes from one fence post to the other, so that's pretty known. I mean, it might have had a little zig or zag a little bit, but not too much, it's pretty much straight there. And that is actually 22 feet from the new top of the bluff. So that gives you a rough idea that they've gone, they've dished the shoreline back 22 feet from where it used to be. Drainage, we still haven't seen, heard too much about drainage. At the planning commission, I did ask about it, and Joe did clarify that he has it taken care of, but I'm not sure what that means. And I did talk to Wes today, he's still concerned, he doesn't know, has the drainage been taken care of or has it not? Because the engineer said no water can be allowed to run over the top of this hill, top of these walls. It has to be captured and lowered down to the lake somehow, and we don't know how that's going to happen. Wes on the east side, he did ask about the wall between the two properties too. I shouldn't say wall, a border wall if you want to call it that, that does catch water so the water can't just freely fall from this property, the 2815, onto whatever Wes' 2817 property. So he wants that wall to remain, you know, of some kind, doesn't have to be exactly what it is right now. In the engineer's letter, there are many, many points that were brought out. Margaret Martin provided this letter, and she has statements from a professional geotechnical engineer, and some of his points are really, really important, I think. He's saying, where's the soil test? The engineer here says, here's the wall design, and I based my wall design upon internal compound stability, but my design is dependent upon a geotechnical engineer doing soil tests and soil samples and making sure that the assumptions that I made to design this wall are accurate based on the actual soil as it exists, and I've never heard one thing about that being provided. I don't know if there's been soils, soil tests or not. Actually, the geotechnical, the professional geotechnical engineer made many very good points, and I noticed that in the engineer's letter, the engineer has a lot of outs, but you can't hold him responsible if soils tests were not done. And I hope that soils tests were done. So this has been a long and difficult challenge for all of us. It's gone on for a very long time, and we're still going at it. So my summary statement is as follows. If the city does decide to approve the walls to remain as they are, then I recommend that the city at least require a soils test per the engineer's statements that he has in his letters to the city, and also, two, require that a wall completion report is submitted by the engineer, Mr. Shinowski, and he has spelled out what that requires, and they're actually in his letter. I am referring to the one from August 24th, it's in his letter. So that's all I have to say. It's been a tough deal.
Thanks, sir. You too.
Anybody else on this one? Okay, so you're looking on the back of the council. Thoughts?
I guess my thoughts are is, I'm trying to, you know, I don't, I don't think we're.
I want to get that picture of the line.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with the point. Yeah, this one.
I mean, because I don't have the management point that, you know, nobody had permission to pull this whole thing back. And then I could see saying, okay, you built these walls, they're done correctly, et cetera, et cetera, but you need to bring the bluff height back to where it was, where the line is. And I'm not going to prove any variances until you give an engineering plan and a permanent plan to bring this hill back to where it was supposed to be. Because you would have never got approval for that, to bring that back, that was way beyond the scope. And so you got to figure out how to bring that back, and the engineer can figure that out. Whatever it costs is not a problem, but you got to bring it back, because it's got to get stabilized back to where the neighbors are potentially for the property. Would have ever been disapproved. You may have, if you had came and said, "How do we have all this stuff down here?" I could see the potential of saying, you might be able to do that, not the extent you went, but not creating, holding the whole cliff back another 23 feet. That's kind of my, otherwise I would just deny, I'd just deny the variance at all.
Yeah, I don't think we're any of the year ruling it, because I think there's too many conditions that still need to be met. You know, and just looking at the picture that we have there, I mean, if I were a crisis, I would be looking, you would expect that wall to look to grade on their side over there to be holding back their hill, which I don't know how you do that now with their trees, and those mature trees are significant in preserving the block. But, so, I guess I don't know what to do really, except what I know is the contractor and applicant are responsible for ensuring the safety of their neighbors' bluffs. That's, they now.
They've created a problem.
They've created a problem, and so.
The neighbors' block, yes.
You know, they, we have to have guidance going forward that also is through the approval of these neighbors who are impacted by it. And then I'm wondering, what do we do? Do we require an ethical agreement at this application? No.
So.
So no.
We're on this application.
On the variance application, April 4th is the extension of the.
That did last extension?
June 3rd. I extended it to June 3rd.
Because I would almost be of the opinion to say we table this and let them go back to the drawing board with the neighbors to get this all figured out to act the way it's supposed to be. And that going down, but the whole bluff that you sculpted into a goal to start bringing that back, and how you're going to do that, because I wouldn't, otherwise I couldn't prove anything at this point. And I'd say go back to the drawing board, and you're going to have to get some insurances, whether it's additional insurance on your insurance on top of it, with all the different workers who are working, because they're leaving the labor. The engineers going to signing off, they got COIs so they can add additional insurance on top of that as well. But I think you got to go back and figure out how to bring this back, especially to where that line is and how you get that figured out.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the council. The neighbor had some very specific suggestions regarding some of the criteria that she would like to see. Are those suggestions that she made something along the lines that the council would consider to go far enough, or are you looking for something beyond those suggestions?
Well, I guess as I look at this line, they went, I mean, I can see that they wanted to get the bluffs down, they're taking care of, but now they've created an entire new bluff landscape that was not part of the like and kind. So I would see if the, if the bluff was still there, those walls wouldn't even be there.
I'm sorry.
And so they got to figure out how to re-engineer to get that grade back there and figure that out to the best of their possible ability. What's stopping anybody from just sculpting out their bluffs and just digging all the dirt, just letting it go? So I either, basically, first of all, I either deny it or we table it and let the engineer and the Valdez people go back to, with the neighbors and get this figured out, knowing the direction that we need to see this. So that would be, you guys could decide, do you want an answer today, or do you want to go back to the drawing board with the neighbors and try and get this figured out?
May I approach? You say your name again for the record.
My name is Paul Shinowski. This photo is a little bit misleading. I would encourage everybody to look at the actual survey with where pre-existing grades were and current grades are. I don't think that you're going to find that it's bowled out like that as much as that photo makes it.
Well, let's say we're just slicing hairs right now. I don't understand the issue though.
I do very.
Okay, I have between agreements with the neighbors of kind of where it was and where it needs to be brought back to, and we can leave it in that realm.
So you say where it needs to be brought back to. What does that mean?
Which you're going to have to bring a whole bunch of dirt back in walls and say, and it's going to happen, if you're like this now, it's going to have to come right back up like what was before, where the yards were all flat versus now, it's like this. And we create a walkout for the house, etc., so.
So one of the bigger issues of contention with, or the questions for you is the top grade of the yard. Do you want that to be up higher where it was?
All the way back to where the fence line was before it was down, because you guys were supposed to go this way towards the right to fix all that stuff, not this way.
Okay. So if we can come back with a plan showing, you know, that the backyard, the lakeside yard has been brought up to where it was before, which would, you know, hopefully help alleviate neighbors' concerns.
One thing you need to look at too, as, as, like, I think they said too, as the wall comes down right now and curves, and now their hills are kind of falling down that way, and all that, because they didn't create that problem. This created a problem, you work with them to make sure that's all stabilized as well, so they don't come and say, okay, they did that, but our hill is still falling down. Okay, so I need to solve a few of those things at the same time. And I'm not saying it has to be exactly right there, right there, but I think everybody's got to be in a reasonable place to say, I think this works. And if everybody given that same page, I'm moving forward to get it, to get it there as well.
So, again, Melanie has been of great help on this, and I encourage you to keep speaking with her about what she has seen through this whole process. And so I guess I would, I would ask that, you know, if we're not going to get an approval tonight, then at least be tabled so that we can come back with a fully solution that helps the situation.
You know, I think that would do you by the best to go really quickly. And I think they're very vocal, they have pretty well written comments, I think they'll tell you if you're in the right direction. And I get the pictures can be misleading, but just looking at those pictures, it's pretty big, even if it's not exact, height difference is there. And then as you can see, going to the neighbor yards, it's pretty clear, right? So until they're, you know, worried about their slope eroding away or handled, I would have a hard time approving something. I can't speak for the rest of these guys here, but I think that's tough, because they didn't sign up for this, right? And so I think we've seen how expensive some of these things are, and I don't want to see their slope fall apart either, because that's just a download of that.
So, yeah, I see the height difference, right? Along with that, I do think that the widening of the walls helped with some of the erosion that was ongoing at each property line, so hopefully bringing this yard elevation up a little bit, possibly, you know, we'll look at what do it take to add a little bit of wall height, what, how much that would take to have that.
A little bit of wall height is not the right statement. It may seem like a lot of wall height, I mean, but whatever it is.
I mean, I mean, you know, the direction of going, we want that bluff, where the bluff started, going back, and kind of brought back to kind of the point of what, however that needs to work. I mean, that's, because you'd never get approval for, from ask for anything to go do that work and sculpt all that out.
So for future reference, reducing the height of the bluff is something that's not generally.
Ever. Ever. No. Ever.
Okay.
Just do manual work on the bluff, it's like very, very, very sketchy and touchy.
Typically, the words like and like and kind are a pretty good thing to say within 75 foot, so.
Right.
I have to understand it burned down, so there's some challenges, but I think trying to get as close as you can back to what it was.
Is that deck, is that coming back on top of this?
I'm sorry, what?
The deck that was there, is that coming back? Do they think that went on top of there yet?
They would like to reconstruct the deck and the shed that was beneath the deck, and as I mentioned earlier, it might not be possible to capture the footprint of the previously existing deck exactly based on the walls as they're built now, but I have not, I have a plan for that, but it's still in question.
They'll be separated?
Yep.
I would say it's all part of the conversation at this point.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it's part of the conversation, there's no guarantees at this point, so.
Well, I think to add one more thing, I have to say, it sounds like, I mean, fire created this situation, is that correct? The fire created the need for this wall to be rebuilt, this was not something that the homeowner was looking for. Correct. Correct. So this bluff, regardless of what happens at this point, will never be returned to its original state. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And hopefully for the better.
Okay, so we are where we are with it, and I think my thoughts are communication, communication, communication. And I think it's always a tricky thing when expectations are set in one direction and then things happen another. And this is something I was talking about earlier with Adam, is that these variances come about, or these after-the-fact issues come about from poor communication, lack of communication, and expectations being set here and then delivering here. And regardless, we are where we are right now, and I think, I do want to acknowledge how incredibly difficult it's likely for the neighbors in this area, for everybody, and that's important to say, because I think whether it's homeowners or the neighbors, nobody was wanting this to turn out the way it is. I think where I'm coming from is that going forward, communication has to be spot on, meaning over-communicate rather than assuming that everybody is on the same page, because likely they're not. And also, my concern going forward is that in order to right a wrong, we're not going further into an area of more disruption, more work, in order to penalize. And that I prefer to see effort and energy, given that we are where we are right now in terms of stabilizing, building things back the best possible, taking into great consideration the neighbors and the impact this has had on them, and also, you know, really looking into that vegetative plan, because it's a stark situation right now, but it likely. because it's a stark situation right now, but it likely needs not to look like that in the future. And I... that's an area that I would like to talk about in the future as well, is maybe making much more specific requirements about that plan, rather than just saying, well, some vegetation. So that's an area that I think I'd like to focus on going forward. But I agree that I think for now, maybe tabling is the right way to go.
And I think since the stop work order happened, I think Melanie might agree that Josh from Valdez has been speaking with you, if not on a daily basis, several times a week. And so, yeah, communication has definitely changed since things were thrown at us like this, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Melanie, is there... the one question I might talk to some of the planning commissioners is, is there anything within our... in the code to ensure that we could accomplish further? Or anything we should implement? I know we talked about having better, you know, what are you actually gonna do? Is there other things that we could have in there that would have... Like, we would have had our eyes on it sooner, so it wouldn't have gotten so far?
Not necessarily that, but I do think that with respect to retaining homes, particularly in lakeyards and lake slopes, you know, staff doesn't have any discretion to approve something that would be similar, like, for example, with boulder wall. Boulder walls that they wanted to implement would have been able to be installed without this disturbance because of the way they were installed, and don't ask me how it is, because I don't know. But it enlarged the footprint of the walls, so there wasn't the ability for us to approve that in an expedited way, which is why they opted to do the same kind of material. I mean, walls are kind of a way of life around the lake, and we don't allow them per se, but in situations, you see them for variances to either correct a slope or repair a failing wall or something like that. So I think we could probably rework the language in the code regarding that from a, first, an emergency repair standpoint and perhaps just going forward and what that looks like. So we have the ability administratively to approve a stair. And oftentimes stairs need a small wall or supporting little ledge that kind of technically becomes a wall. So then they come through the planning commission and go through the process. And that's something I can figure that out. I don't know that.
You know, maybe that'd be a good work session topic, you know, to add on. Because I kinda, I agree with this, you know, trying to take some steps with emergency wall stuff to go. If the better methodology is showing walls, their boulder wall rather. I think it'd be a good work session topic and just see what can we do to make sure the reason we don't get into this next time is because the boulder wall couldn't be approved fast enough. I mean, that's true.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's a solution. I'm just wondering, like, is there a different way to look at it? So that potentially we wouldn't have gotten this far? Or it's like, we have no man's name, we can't get back?
We are our own worst enemy when it comes to inflexibility in the zero seventy-five with things like slope stabilization and retaining walls and those kind of things. Because once you have the in-kind or like in-kind, you end up with this. Because now you're dealing with dead men and you're dealing with massive amounts of excavation to replace exactly what was there before, when perhaps the intent of the code and the reason it was written that way was not to force, you know, people to spend more money on timber walls, but to, you know, stabilize the slope, provide as natural a look as possible while doing so. And there may be better methods to do that than just simply replacing exactly what's there. And that's part of what's driven this. And I will say, I'm a bit quiet for this, but most of this, but I will say for city engineering projects where we're doing the exact same work, we often employ the exact same method. We will dig down to get everything that's bad out, and we will start rebuilding those walls. We just did a ravine stabilization project this fall. Different materials and a little bit different situation, but generally the same method. Built the road in, built our way back out. And so that is a... that is, in a residential area like this, that's really tight, that looks massive, but I mean, it is kind of a very common way to do those particular kind of installations. So there are other methods, but that's very common.
Well, it'd be good to be open to hearing alternative options within what we're doing here.
So then staff will look at their schedule, kind of propose one of those work session dates.
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that. While Melanie can give discussion on different...
You're on the X, right? Do you know?
Okay, so prices, you're good with the table?
Yeah.
Yes.
May I approach, please, sir?
Can you say your name again?
I'm sorry, sir. So maybe something clear. I tried to work with the neighbors the whole time, the process. I'm tied to Michelle Ross and the wife plenty of time to conserve her block, some of the east and the west. This is why we dig in the walls on each block by hand. We not dig any the neighbors. We dig the center of the wall to be able to remove. So there's a picture, Melanie, if you look in there. The whole block for her side is completely uncovered with the block when they burned it up. I'm not opposed to any decision that you guys make. It's all the way around here to try to solve this issue. Like, I apologize in the beginning when I started doing this. I worked with the neighbors both sides to try to make this as a faster and the right way to do it when minimize the damage in both sides of the block. With the soil test, the Michelle Ross report, we print the same soil back end. We not print any soil from outside to end. We only print drainage rock or drainage. So the soil test is the same soils in the block. So you look at the picture there, you can see the root system is completely exposed. The white line in the picture, the Michelle Ross, you can see the fence is way behind all the last timber wall. This is there, it's laying this way, so it's a four feet fence, it's laying in there. So again, I'm not trying to argue with you guys. This is not what I mean. Try to solve the issue that we have here that created at some point. I try to follow where the city asking me to do to protect the block. I think I did everything I can to protect the neighbors' block. And that witness, my guys dig it by hand every time as possible. This is all I can say. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, so Omega moved to the three door of LA.
Second time.
Do you wanna specify a meaning to come back or do you wanna just kind of wait till you know? We only get ten days notice, right?
Pardon?
We only need ten days notice if we're on the agenda.
You don't.
No, maybe I have to notice. Okay, so we'll just table it, and then put it up, and come back. Okay, can we get a second over here?
Yes.
Okay, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a bathroom break, and we'll come back to your financial report.
Uh, Islamar.
And that, and this is our financial report of the month.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Couple slides, I'd like to get some access. Okay, this is the first meeting of the month, which means we have our building permit revenue slide from last month. And you can see, over the second month in a row this year, we outperformed last year's building permit revenue. And for the year, we're about thirty-five percent ahead of last year. That said, if we could look at the second slide, you can see that the first two months of the year, buying water, are the lowest activity of the year. So we're off to a good start, but we'll have to wait until we see them made through. Probably November period is where all of the revenue comes in. So we're off to a good start, but hopefully it continues. At sixteen percent of revenue, like roughly sixteen percent of the year, which is very good.
That's actually very good, right?
Yeah. And that's all I have tonight.
Alright, city engineering board.
Council, I do have a couple of updates. I did receive a request from Councilmember Benson regarding data practice act and thought it'd be useful to share it with the entire council. The question was, when you as individual council members get emails from residents or other citizens, what is the status of those emails? And what the law says is that if there's an email from a resident to a council member or the mayor, that email is private data, meaning that if we got a data practice request, you would not need to expose it because it's private data. You as the holder of that data could choose to share it if you wanted to. And you as the holder or receiver or sender of that email can choose to share it, even though it's private. But you can choose to hold it as private data also. Something to keep in mind with that is if you get an email from a resident and then you forward it to, say, Adam, at that point, that email has become public. The sharing with staff has made it public. If you get an email from a resident and they copy a staff member, that email then becomes public also. So strictly speaking, correspondence to and from residents is private data. There are other types of classification. You receive a property complaint data that's technically confidential. There is a legal distinction between confidential and private. Otherwise, you know, when we've done our training, generally what we said is, look, all emails, all data is presumed public. But I think this is one of those exceptions that has come up, and there's questions about it. The thing to keep in mind that if and when we have emails in this litigation, the discovery process may in fact require them to be disclosed, but can it be start with the fact that they're private? So they're not always disclosed. So I don't know if there's questions on that or anything that's...
No, I don't have any question. You did clarify that for me. I was asking on behalf of individuals who have asked that question of me. So I thought it might be helpful, rather than me talking to person here and there to just have you explain it for the record. Thanks.
Were there any questions on that? The second item that I was asked to cover, and I believe the request came... well, I know the request came from Councilmember Benson. And then I have had an opportunity to talk to Councilmember Seals was, there was a question about whether Councilmember Seals has a conflict of interest as it relates to all items related to the fire department. And I would start by saying, I assume the origin of the question is because Councilmember Seals is married to, along to your firefighter with long life. And so my answer to that is, at this point in time, I do not feel that Councilmember Seals has a conflict of interest. The negotiations that you're doing for things like establishing a fire department or hiring a fire chief or purchasing a fire truck, from my perspective, do not enhance or increase or create conflict of interest for Councilmember Seals. The formation of a fire department in and of itself does not create a financial benefit or ruin conflict in any of those decisions. I did talk to Councilmember Seals that there are certain decisions that I would advise her to abstain from if the conflict can occur when it comes time to hire. If her husband is one of those people that the city chooses to hire, I think she should abstain from that. Financial decisions like rates of pay or engine things, I would advise her to step away from those. But the generalized formation, from my perspective, or creation of a fire department of the city... But the generalized formation, from my perspective, or creation of a fire department of the city is in management, it's the same thing that you chose to create a public works department. Since of course, service force city, I understand there's controversy and discussion about the fire department, but you're talking about creating a department. Uh, there may be certain individual decisions regarding that, um, that create a conflict, uh, should her husband continue to pursue the fire department either. Uh, but at this point in time, the high level nature of the decisions and the discussions we have, in my opinion, do not create conflict because it's just a Councilmember Seals based on the fact that her husband is employed by the state of the city. So I don't know if there are further questions on that or.
No, and I, I brought that up only because it had been asked, um, during public comment at the last meeting. So I just want to ensure that if the public, unless there were, you know, questions that people were just asking correctly, I don't know that that one was. So I was just trying to be mindful of getting you to have a statement about that to answer back to the public.
Yep, and that's, that's out there at this point, and that's, my assumption is based on the fact that her husband is a long life fire department. I'm not sure, or other factors that I haven't to know about, uh, I'd certainly take a second look at that. The, uh, third item I did want to touch on is I did attend the LMCD, uh, board meeting last week. As you know, the city owns some property, uh, that an individual is trying to place a commercial dock on. The, uh, city, uh, had directed staff to prepare a letter last August of checking to, uh, that application. Laura did write that letter, and we resubmitted it later on. I can't remember if it was the fall or early winter, um, containing our objection. LMCD did hear, uh, in February or January, I can't remember now. They originally made a motion to direct staff to bring back findings denying the application. Uh, at their meeting last week, they did act on those, uh, proposed findings. They modified them a bit, uh, but they did deny, uh, the application that was slotted the, or involved the city-owned land. So if there's any questions about that, um, I was there, we were, I was prepared to present the city's position on that. LMCD really limited testimony to just the applicant and anything new. Uh, and the discussion candidly was not so much about whether they were going to change their, uh, more or less, what was the original motion and what should be included in the findings. So they did pare down the findings a little bit. They felt more was along the lines of what the maker of the motion had stated. Um, but they did vote to deny it. So that is at least final for the moment at this point.
And have we heard from Mr. Gustafson yet? Cause I, it sounded like there might be a potential involvement with Mora at some point with him.
You know, no, I have not.
Okay.
Um, on as it relates to that application.
Okay.
Other than this, but not on that. Um, and then just, uh, a final thing, uh, I, your meeting for, your regular meeting for March has been moved to next week, next Tuesday. I do have a conflict with another committee. I will, uh, I'm going to take a look at the agenda for next week and talk to Adam, but, uh, it may be you, maybe someone else in my office. So we'll change the schedule as a big period of conflict. With that, I have daughter updates and most other questions.
Thanks, guys.
City Administrator, you know, I actually missed community development work, so I don't know if you had any other items in your community development work. I guess we.
Um, not a whole lot, a few updates. We've been working on, uh, mailing for, um, some septic properties. We send out reminders for compliance reports to be submitted every, those are due every three years. So we, um, update our kind of master database and send those reminders out. So we're working on, uh, some of those draft lettering, uh, in the department. Um, busy still with permits, as Rob noted, so we're relatively busy with contractors. Um, uh, and then also, um, just working on some, uh, reporting and citizen serve, uh, reports with code enforcement and permitting as well, trying to update and stream more of some of that information. Um, other than that, we've also participated in some, uh, V and R trainings with low plane and shore lanes. So as they go on, kind of this winter. So my whole department's been, uh, busy participating in some of those, but busy as usual and available for questions if you have any.
All right, thanks. All right, Adam, City Administrator Engineer Report.
Um, just a few engineering updates. Uh, first of all, on the new public works facility, we've, uh, re, uh, re-initiated our, uh, bi-weekly construction meetings with contractor or protected engineers. Uh, we are, uh, tentatively snow and weather dependent, um, looking at, uh, re, uh, re-engaging with earthworks, uh, on the site on the fourth of April, and right now tentatively have a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for the tenth of April. Last council meeting, they brought forward a roads proposal on a JPA with, uh, two of our, uh, neighboring communities. Uh, just a quick update on that, the city of Medina, um, did also approve that JPA. So now we're just kind of waiting on independents, um, in their decision. Uh, and that again was for the, uh, the repaving of Town Mine Road, um, over this year. And then, uh, the final thing, as it was on consent, but just a little bit of background, um, we did go out for, uh, bids for our sewer rehabilitation project. Um, and, uh, as that, uh, council action noted, we did get bids back, but they were significantly, uh, over what our, our estimates are. Um, and that's for a pipelining process, minds existing pipes, um, and just, uh, the cost per foot for an eight-inch pipe has gone up ten bucks. So we went from forty dollars a foot to fifty dollars a foot. Um, so, um, as the council action today said, we reject all bids and we'll, we downscope that and we'll have it out for bid. We have it out for bid right now, actually, um, for bids and if early.
It's short.
We just, yeah, reduced the scopes, yeah, shortened the overall footage of, uh, the work that we do on that project. The revised one, assuming bids come in good this time, um, primarily focuses down on Casco Point. That we should finish up most of that sewer rehabilitation work, um, and that set of our service system. That's all.
Uh, road restrictions on the.
Road restrictions started on Friday.
Right. We all flagged.
Yep, those, uh, that we signpost, uh, so our roads, uh, that are restricted four ton are all, uh, posted, which is the majority of the municipal roads, uh, with a few exceptions of our, our, our bigger NSA roads, but, yeah, with all. So I'm posted and, uh, Lisa, if any, is, uh, actively enforcing.
All right, a lot of thanks to our public comments, which are limited to three minutes per person. Adam handles the, uh, timer over there. It's an opportunity for the public to address the council. Council will not engage in discussion or take action if items presented on this time. However, the council member here should, as a staff, will follow our consideration in a future meeting. Speakers should state their name and home address at the point of speaking, and if you can refrain from swearing, that would be great. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Molly Reynolds. I live at six, six, five Orchard Park Road. I'd like to share a public letter from the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, uh, that was drafted on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, to whom it may concern. This letter is written in response to a discussion about our organization at the Orno City Council Work Session on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The name of the organization is the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities. It is not the Northwest Hennepin Mayor's Association, as you know, Walsh referred to it. The NWHLM is composed of elected representatives from various cities and jurisdictions throughout the area. Members include mayors, city council members, county commissioner, park board commissioner, and a metropolitan council member. It is not just for mayors. Some cities have paid for two memberships. However, each city has one vote. During the work session, Mayor Walsh stated, I am actually a member of that organization. However, Mayor Walsh and Orno's membership and participation ended in twenty seventeen and were not renewed for twenty eighteen at the request, uh, of Mayor Walsh. Neither he nor any other elected officials from the city of Orno have attended our meetings since twenty seventeen. However, that reasonably changed January twenty twenty-three, when a newly elected Orno council member was invited and began attending meetings on February fourteenth, which is the day after the Orno City Council Work Session. Mayor Walsh contacted the NWHLM and stated he would be attending the meetings going forward. As our mission states, our goal is to educate members and network to achieve better results within our city. We value trusted relationships, working together and learning and growing in our respective roles to help make our cities the best possible. Therefore, it is essential that we, that what is being stated publicly about the NWHLM is accurate. Respectively submitted by the NWHLM Executive Committee, Mayor Tom McKee, Chair Mayor Julie Moss Kuski, immediate past chairperson Mayor Charlie Minor-Vice Chair Mayor Renee Huffton, Secretary and Mayor Kent Koch. Pressure. Thanks.
January thirteen eighty-six, Rest Point Road, and wow, a whole other group. You know, Mayor Walsh is a little disingenuous. It's not just us few male contents from Orno. Crazy. Hey, uh, quick point of clarification, Mr. Edwards. Um, the new public works building being built, are there any renewable options in, involved in it?
Oh, do you mean renewable energy?
Yes. No. Uh, has that building been planned with any kind of, you know, zero considerations?
No.
No. So we have Mayor Walsh up here telling everybody we're planning for the next hundred years with our public works building, but they can't be bothered to include modern renewable technologies. Great plan there, buddy.
Chelsea Waitrick, you've got my address memorized. And with that, you should probably be careful in taking liberties and people's, for the amendment rights. Hate to see you sued about that. Uh, now that I've seen you firsthand how truly pompous and arrogant, disrespectful you are, I, uh, decided to look into other meetings in smaller groups and see if it was just, uh, just the public that you treated like crap or if it was just all around your personality. And I found that anyone that dares to have their own thought and not follow you blindly, get to see how truly venomous you are. For example, I not know why you decided to shut down February thirteenth meeting early because instead of, uh, addressing the new council member in a private conversation, you decided to blindside her and call her out for doing her job. And, uh, since she didn't, she wanted to address that in a proper way at the meeting, you had to shut that down, didn't you? Uh, you found what she was saying to be inappropriate, which is funny coming from you. Um, let's see here. It seems to me that the only council member is doing, that's doing what they're supposed to do is the new one. Everybody else just follows you blindly. Uh, really, all you do is look after your best benefits and your friends, which is pretty obvious when you start looking around. So, um, I'm thinking you should probably answer some questions, address what people are asking of you. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Bean or Crosby, my bad, could sit in and not run away. How many, how many meetings can you run away from? People are just going to keep digging into your background, and if this is what's at the surface, imagine what else we'll find.
Anybody else?
Brad Erickson, twenty-four eighty-five, independence ruined independence. Well, we've done it again, Mr. Walsh. We've made the paper. You know, the one you don't read. New Orno council member, it's time to end the chaos. I couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more. You finally come out and admitted what you sent, but yet there is no apologies forthcoming. What I don't understand is this is not such a big deal to you. Why don't you just apologize? You know it's upsetting people. This is the third article out on this stuff, and it's no big deal to you. Maybe if my, um, issue had more to do with dirt, it would be taken more seriously. Is that true? Let me show you what it looks like when a real mayor from a real city addresses the Holocaust. And then we'll contrast that with what you put out there. Mayor Sam Joshi in Edison, New Jersey, it's a real city. Six million, and I'm, it's unfortunate, Mr. Crosby isn't here, being from New Jersey. Six million Jews and countless others were murdered by the Nazis, murdered. It is our responsibility to put an end to hate and antisemitism everywhere. That's your responsibility. But this is what you came about, isn't it? You've admitted it. You say there's nothing wrong with it. What's wrong with you is what I wonder. There is one person on this council, and I want you both, Ms. Seals and Mr. Johnson, to look at the, the contrast here. Okay? Orno mayor minimized the Holocaust, council member fundraised for the prom quits. What in the hell is going on? And you talk to me about swearing? You send me a video with the F word, the A word, and the S word, and then you talk to me about swearing? Give me a break. Give me a break. I know what's going. So she has denounced this video. He is standing behind it wholeheartedly, and I can only venture a guess where he's at on it because we have yet to find out more about this cat. I want to know where you two stand now. You guys have left you out of it. This city needs to make a statement and make a stand, take a stand. Be leaders instead of a follower. Who is this guy? He's from St. Louis Park. He knows better. He knows better. He knew better, and he said it anyway. And everybody knows what we're dealing with now.
Thank you. You've had your ten minutes, thank you. Anybody else?
Fuck you. Pray.
What do you got to say? All you got, send me some more videos.
Oh, I totally get it. Two, by the way.
It was just a, uh, Mayor Council Report.
Thank you. Um, I have three items for tonight, but before I go into those, I just want to clarify, just because it was, um, talked about just a moment ago, that I did speak, um, to the reporter for the Star Tribune, and I just want to point a clarification. As any quotation you see in the article that has quotes around it is from me. The headline was not. So those words in the headline were chosen by the gentleman who wrote the article. Those weren't my words. I just, and one person in the public asked me about that, so I wanted to clarify. Uh, moving forward, last week, I did attend the League of Minnesota Cities, um, Day on the Hill, and it is a fantastic opportunity to meet, um, well, we heard from the Lieutenant Governor as well as other officials. And the League of Cities is an incredible resource that does offer ongoing opportunities for education, um, to learn, educate, socialize, and influence, as one of their speakers put it. And I find that these gatherings are a place, um, where information can be exchanged, where you can meet other folks in the community who are serving their respective cities, and it's just an all-around, um, stand-up organization. So thanks to them. And on the note, uh, second item here, on the note of working with other elected officials and other municipalities, um, I do want to address several issues regarding, um, the Northwest Hennepin League. Um, and this is the organization that's comprised of elected leaders around the west metro, and I was personally invited by members of this group to attend meetings. Uh, Mayor Walsh has made comments about me two times in public meetings, most recently at the last council meeting, and his comments, um, about me were added to our city's permanent record tonight. Uh, the mayor stated that during a Northwest Hennepin League meeting, that I suggested to a Hennepin County Commissioner that a youth sports grant the city of Orno applied for last year not be approved. The mayor added that this alleged action undermined our staff at Orno and the work they do. I want everybody in this room to understand how seriously I take my oath of office. I take my professional reputation and my adherence to ethical practice very seriously. And when these areas are called into question, I will address it on record. First, I'm a firm believer in following process and procedure and have made that clear from the beginning of my term. I did not and would not ever attempt to interfere with the grant application process. It's unethical and goes against everything I stand for. Second, the commissioner in attendance at the meeting represents a district that does not include. represents a district that does not include the city of Orno. Finally, I would ask the mayor contact the Hennepin County Commissioner, who was present that night, to clear up any lingering questions related to this matter so that this issue is not brought up in public meetings again in the future. And regarding the mayor's statement that I undermined staff, from the beginning of my term, I've explained that I intend to, and staff has heard me say this, stay in my lane as a council member. That I respect staff's expertise and I will draw upon that knowledge to make informed decisions. I have great respect for the staff, and I do my best to demonstrate it. Since joining the council, I've worked to build positive and respectful relationships with every member of staff that I've met. I've also invited feedback in order to address any issues that may arise. And in the absence of direct communication from staff indicating a concern, I'm operating under the assumption that my actions have not caused staff to feel that they've been undermined. Finally, individual council members speak for themselves, and I believe it's important that staff are empowered to do the same. Our city administrator recently gave a presentation that spoke to the power dynamics that exist between council and staff. It's important that council members recognize this dynamic is real. And from my perspective, the mayor is welcome to speak for himself, but I believe it is not necessary nor helpful for him to speak for others, especially when these very individuals are present at meetings. So, going forward, there may be times when I talk about difficult issues facing our city or I may provide constructive criticism about a matter at hand. This is very different from unethical behavior or personal attack. Part of the work I will do as an elected leader is to have the hard discussions and face issues that our city is grappling with. This should not be conflated with showing disrespect or undermining others. Our job is to lead our city, especially when things are difficult. And that brings me to my third and final point tonight. Brad Erickson has been attending city council meetings for nearly a year, and he's again with us tonight. He has stated again and again that Mayor Walsh sent a video to him over Facebook in 2020 that was objectionable and that caused serious distress. This issue has been a constant subject of public comment. It has affected the function of meetings and has taken extra resources on the part of staff. This is my third month in office, and I have seen no signs that the matter is any closer to resolution than it was nearly a year ago. I met with Mr. Erickson and City Administrator Edwards several weeks ago to better understand the situation. And after doing so, I wrote a letter to my fellow council members and asked City Administrator Edwards to distribute it. After discussion with the city attorney, Mr. Edwards recommended that the letter be attached in the agenda packet for today's meeting. The reason was to avoid possible violation of open meeting law if there might be discussion and to have any comments on the matter made in a public forum. And this letter was included in the packet, and therefore, I'm not going to read it here. I'm asking tonight that my fellow members of council consider the options I laid out in the letter and perhaps offer any other possible ways to address this issue. The only piece of information I'd like to add is that after speaking with the League of Minnesota Cities, they confirmed that the services of a professional mediator are available at no cost to the city of Orno. So, that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
So, the one update, which is kind of a summary would be, is on fire. So, Matt Johnson, myself, and Adam Edwards were down at the Capitol. We met with the city of Long Lake officials, so John Dyvick, Charlie Meyer, and then also representatives from Andrew Myers and Kelly Morrison's gang. And then also there was another... I can't remember who it was. It was the executive director. Lots of words after it, but dealing with pension. And started to have conversations about, you know, what it would look like with the transfer. I also wanted to let the other group know that, you know, we had actually some other conversations that were brought about to us by two firefighters, ironically. A representative, a firefighter who lives in Long Lake and then a firefighter who lives in Orno, that has expressed an interest to, you know, join in the discussions with Matt, John, Charlie, and I to see if we can find a solution, you know, that really, I would say, both cities and the firefighters feel good about or feel okay. So, lots of good conversations have happened. You know, lots of back and forth, I would say. I wouldn't say we've landed the plane yet. We're definitely still building the plane per se. But I wanted to share that because I know sometimes I hear the words that the negotiations have stopped and people aren't talking, and that's just not accurate. I don't have anything formal to share because I think, you know, we want to make sure Long Lake feels good with what they're, you know, going with and same with Orno before we bring anything back. You know, as I've shared with them this whole way through, you know, Matt and I are just two people, right? So, we can't make the decision, but we can let you know if it makes sense, at least from our perspective. The other thing, I've had... I don't know if it's a good fortune or not, but the firefighters have taken it upon themselves, some of them, to give me the NFPA guidelines. So, nice lengthy book of all the things fire-related that I've had the great opportunity to read. I am not finished by any means. I'm not going to be an expert. But I will say, what I have learned is we have a lot of opportunity. So, I know that Ron and Adam and James are putting together an analysis. I think we need to make sure to really level set ourselves. You know, when I looked at those guidelines, there's a lot of pieces... I'm just going to complete the equipment. There's a lot of pieces of equipment that we're using for fire that are... don't fit the guidelines. When I say they don't fit the guidelines, I mean, we're ten, fifteen years off of when we should have pulled these out of service. So, I mentioned this just saying, you know, I'm not an expert, but I know these guys are going to build, bring us a really thoughtful analysis. So, you know, I think regardless of where we land, you know, there's going to have to be this pretty well-thought-out plan year over year to start replacing pieces of equipment. Because when you start to really look into those guidelines, you know, they pretty much say things after fifteen years. You're not using them as a first line, right? We've got some that are well over fifteen, some that are over twenty. So, you know, when you're thinking about, you know, public interest and servicing your residents and bringing, you know, bringing safety to their houses, you need a piece of equipment that's going to get there, right? So, I haven't seen the full analysis. The guys are still working on it. But I did want to kind of level set, you know, the conversation is that, you know, there's... I mean, just looking at the herd fleet, no matter where we land, we're going to have to start purchasing some stuff in the near future. The other challenge is, is new equipment is... And this is, you know, coming from the experts. It's twenty-four to thirty-six months old, right? So, even if you said you're going to buy all this, you know, it's going to take time. So, there's definitely going to have to be some thoughtful conversation on how do we solve for that? So, again, not laying out the purchase plan, not laying out CIP, but I think, you know, reading those, starting to read those guidelines were pretty eye-opening to me on, you know, what's at work ahead of us is regardless of, you know, what solution we have done. So, I don't know. Matt, if you have anything to add?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You didn't read the guidelines yet?
No.
I did send them. They're coming. I'm not... I'll say that... I did want to say we have... I want to say congrats to the boys hockey teams for making it into the state tournament. Warroad and Hammontown are tough. So, they're a hockey town USA, so... But really well thought of. Love, again, love seeing some of the guys that I've seen when they're little grow up. And not so sure about the bleached chair and wings and things like... Or the salad, I think is what they call it. But super fun. I know even some of my kids were like, "I knew that person on TV." It was super cute to see, just the excitement. So, big kudos to all of them. And bummer that they didn't, you know, make it to the end, but they should be super proud either way. They played some hard hockey there, so... That's all I have.
Yeah, so I was also in attendance at the LMCD meeting. Our representative Richie Anderson was born in. So, I'll really thank him for his participation in LMCD. That was a special thanks to staff and Soren. That issue at the LMCD was a big one. It was a floating dock, part of Orno-owned property that someone had made a marine on it. And, you know, it took some cooperation from the LMCD to put that too, so... So, I think we handled that well and to each other. In the consent agenda, there was... Adam's evaluation was done. And so, just, you know, really proud to have him. He did... He had an exceptional review. And then we'll add it. Then, uh... Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to add the... trip wrap lake shore for the work section? Or are we just...
I don't think they're going to have it next time, so...
No, but they're just going to bring it forward.
Right, I will add it to the item we discussed earlier. I'll put it out there on the circuit table.
Okay. And then we'll just put that out. Okay, and then the other issue that keeps coming up is average lake shore setback. That's probably another one to put in there. Just in fact, the staff in particular, that's, you know... I think one of our goals needs to be for the benefit of the resident is that we empower staff wherever we can to expedite processes. And so, hangups. We made a good step on the emergency restoration issue. Maybe we can make it a little bit better now that we've done it. Average lake shore setback is another piece of that that staff keeps bringing up as something. And so, there's a real question, a lot of history. I got to Soren about it, too. You know, a lot of history with that average lake shore setback. And, you know, we had additional setbacks to the watersheds requirement for wetlands. Orno just arbitrarily threw a number out and made one. We got rid of that because they're the authority that has jurisdiction. So, maybe that's something else that we visit along the way. So, we have congratulations to the hockey team there. I understand swim team made it. Had some qualifiers for state teams, so congratulations.
All right, yeah, definitely thanks. Boys hockey was an exciting game coming back from three zip. And then one of those goals that got through three goals before they kind of bounced off the back of the glass and then hit the goalie's back and fell in the goal. So, that was one of the three goals. So, if they would have got that, we would have beat Warroad. That would have been unbelievable. But fate was not with us that day, but they should be proud. They did a great job. Boys basketball is also a reception championship. I don't know if that's bigger tomorrow or Wednesday. So, that'll be coming. So, if they win that, they'll be going to state, too. So, a lot of good stuff coming up. April tenth, I think Adam mentioned, we do have a groundbreaking. So, invite the public if you want to come out to the Public Works Facility and grab a shovel and shovel some dirt over the new Public Works Facility over there off of Oakhurst Bay Road. As Councilmember Benson was also at the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities. I was also there and did bring up the issue about the inappropriate conversations. And no one disagreed that it was not inappropriate. And now we've had a very big kerfuffle in that organization now about who should be coming as guests. And so, that's an issue that wrestled me because of the issues that have been created there. I did have the first coffee with the mayor and the second Wednesday in the month, this last Wednesday. We had some good conversations and see some people who were in the audience that were there. One of the sad things that happened is that Carter Anderson was there and got in a disagreement with Mr. Erickson. And it just turned into Mr. Erickson saying, "Well, you want to take this outside?" So, I'm not sure what...
No, that's not what was said. That was never said.
It sounded like I'm talking. I'm talking. Carter Anderson was there. It sounded like...
Why are you even bringing this up?
It's sad when that comes up.
Why am I even bringing this up?
So, speaking of the Benson letter, it's ironic that Benson's biggest supporter, financial supporter of the election, is Mr. Brad Erickson. And I think it was a good time to address some of these issues.
What's that most likely supporter to...
And she had to meet Mr. Erickson here at City Hall with our city administrator in attendance because she was afraid to meet with him by herself. So, it's definitely ironic that that is going on being the biggest supporter. And both...
This is a mayor's report? Are you insulting people? This is a mayor's report insulting people? Oh, really? Really? There's a letter that Benson wrote. That's...
November twenty-eighth. He had a letter that says November twenty-eighth.
You can send it out there. You can send it out. Because as far as I'm concerned, both have serious credibility issues. So, let's start with...
Can we have this...
We're going to talk about the issues here. Let's start with...
Who was the one who lied about a Kevin Apple train? Who lied about that?
Back in June...
That'd be Mayor Walsh who lied.
Back in April, Brad Erickson came out for the first time for... I hadn't seen him in a long time. And he came and yelled at us about taking care of his friend, Jane I. Dargan. If we didn't, well, then I wouldn't be here. So, we have manufactured anger with manufactured victimhood.
How is this a mayor's report? How is this a mayor's report?
So, let's start with the...
How is this a mayor's report?
Let's start with line number one.
How will be the man that talked about Apple? Brad Erickson decided to come...
Got to grow up.
Grow up, buddy. Look at that.
The mayor with the word credibility issues. Remember Brad Erickson came back here in May-June and talked about the secret videos of me that he had that he wanted to show staff and said that I will... This was his... This was his manufactured anger. And he finally admitted after a couple of months. His attorney finally admitted to Soren as he was trying to meet with staff that...
Hey, can we get the three-minute thing going over there, please? Everybody else is having a three-minute.
So, that was manufactured anger, manufactured victimhood, line number one.
Three minutes, please.
So, now let's talk about...
Three minutes, please.
Let's talk about the next manufactured anger, manufactured lie. That he decided to come and say that somehow I forced him to remove his wind turbine when he voluntarily took it down from his property in 2020. And even his lawyer called me to say that Brad was wrong and we never said anything like that. But he came and said that this was an issue why I should resign. And that's big line number two.
So, this is a kind of your claim of my ass?
While you're fracturing a lie, he ended about... And it's manufacturing victimhood. So, what you're seeing, in my opinion, is a pattern of deception, rage, and victimhood[1661.94] They're trying to create rage in the city council room. Now there's a current video that he's decided to say he's, that is manufacturing victimhood from here too, that he's, that supposedly I sent him in 2020, which I have no recollection of. And I've got lots of, I've got lots of fish bots that send me links to send out the timeline. Facebook, basic messenger, AOL, Gmail, all the time. But, and it's interesting, because during the summer of 2020, I was conversing with Brad many times, because we were friendly. And he, and he was saying I could throw signs up in the lawn as long as they weren't Democrats. And I mentioned that there was Democrat, Democrat, and he said, I'm gonna take it down immediately. And then he said, uh, many times, I suppose in the late 2020, early 21.
And then you said you had to take mine down. Then you said I had to take mine down.
Mayor Walsh gonna talk to you about something, I'll talk to you, both our grandsons live there. Traffic's a concern, I said, I will put you in touch with the right people. Then he said, if you form a community, we want us to warn station in February 21. Sorry, Mayor, it's Brad, I'd be glad to introduce you to them. So all this time that we've been talking, and all of a sudden now he's recreating the history of his victimhood. So, when it comes to credibility, in my opinion, there's zero credibility coming from Mr. Brad Erickson when it started one lie to the next lie, and it just kept on going. Now we go to Council Member Benson, which we talked about, the, the North, the League of Municipalities. Nobody there argued that it was very inappropriate, the things that she said in a, in a room of elected officials, including Met Council and Hennepin County Commissioners. And whether the Hennepin County Commissioner was the one for that area or is not, is irrelevant. When you're talking negatively in a room of elected officials about growth and learning, to talk negatively about things that we've done as a staff, and then you talk negatively about the mayor, you're talking negatively about the council, I don't give you a whole lot of credibility on you coming to the rescue of anything or having Nubia acknowledge that to put you up there as a spokesman for the city in any capacity.
Ooh, take a breath, buddy. Take a breath.
I'm gonna deny.
Oh, boy.
All of your anger. So I got to today, motion adjourned. I want to make a say, I, I, we are adjourned.
Where's Mr. Cosby at?
Here, here.
We just did the combo, we did the same, same thing, still the combo. It lost.
The thing that gave you that.
Whatever, it's more.